This is flashing, that's okay. It keeps doing it, I'm sorry to worry about this. I'll do that. Just gonna end this one. Give you a sign, obviously if someone's being... They're supposed to give us a cue that... Okay. Hmm? Somebody's sparking the fire. Oh, yeah. I was like, "What?" I mean... I know, I was gonna say, "I feel like you don't panic." Is your attitude a panic or... Oh, yes. Like, whatever happens. Yeah. I mean, meanwhile... That's what it feels like you're trying to do. Well, internally, that's what it feels like. But then outside, you have to be like... Like, pull out the duck, isn't it like on top of the water? And then you make it like this. It's like... That's why everybody should be given some of the information possible that I've done. Like, you just smash it together with your fingers, it's all... No rocks. Oh, yeah. Like, the... I tried to show up for my... Hit me? Sound like, "Oh, this could be something." We learned... Well, in turn, that's what it just like... But then, call out the duck, isn't it like on top of the water? And then you make it like this. It's like... That's why everybody should be given some of the information possible that I've done. Like, you just smash it together with your fingers, it's all... No rocks. Sorry. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten.
That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. That's why everybody should be given some of the information possible that I've done. Like, you just smash it together with your fingers, it's all... No rocks. Sorry. Oh, yeah. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. Uh, completely done. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. Uh, completely done. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. Uh, completely done. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. Uh, completely done. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Yeah, I was like... Well, also there's... Ah! It was like a roach or something. I think they're ready. Oh, yeah. I think so. Uh, completely done. Six to five fifteen. We should have argued this earlier. Oh, she just thought it was ten. That clock is way off, right? That clock is way off, right? The clock says six oh seven, but it's only six o'clock. Yeah. I was like, "You gotta get started." She's like, "Do it." I was like, "When that just smiles." It was like... Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January Fantastic Forty-nine presentation. My name is Kayla Maldonado. I am the Internal Communications Manager for School District Forty-nine. Tonight, we have some great nominees. We will recognize students and staff who are exceptional examples of how D forty-nine is the best place to learn, work, and lead. We do ask our honorees to please stay for the full presentation so our board members and district team members have a chance to offer you their congratulations afterwards. Before I introduce our honorees, I'd like to give a shout-out to our sponsors. We are always grateful to Deion's Air Academy Credit Union and Texas Roadhouse for donating gift cards to our honorees. Our honorees tonight will be receiving gift cards to Texas Roadhouse, so, always a good choice. Okay, our first nominees for the evening are... I'm a little bit biased because they are from my old high school. Violet, Carol, and Kira Teeples were nominated by Amy Sanchez Martinez, Principal at Sand Creek High School. These two students are the co-presidents, student body co-presidents. They consistently seek opportunities in servant leadership to help their community. They organized a zone-wide blanket drive, which I actually was in attendance for, and it was a really cool event, for families who received support and services at the Ronald McDonald House, and they lead in ways that reflect their values of kindness, inclusion, and care. So Violet, Kira, and Ms. Amy Sanchez Martinez can come up. We can give them a round of applause. (APPLAUSE)
Good evening. I'm so happy to be here, and I'm even happier that I get to honor these two here behind me. I really believe that if more people in the world were like Violet and Kira, the world would be a better place. If more of us lived our lives like these two do, the world would be a better place. I know I'm a better person because I have the chance to know them. There's something that I see within them that, as young people in these types of positions, you don't see all of the time. And as leaders, we all have our skill sets and our strengths that help enhance wherever we go. Every single time with these two, they seek to help others. Every single thing they do is to help someone, to serve someone, to love someone. Most especially those who feel like they aren't loved and those who feel like they may not be a part of things. So, I nominated them after our blanket drive, which we had in this room. We had a blanket party, blanket-making party here in this room, and there was lots and lots of people here. We had families come, we had some of our teams from our school come, we had community members come and join us, and it was a great way to remember what the holiday season should be about, which is loving one another and helping one another, rather than seeking things for ourselves. And I see them running around the school all the time, walking fast with a sense of purpose because they mean business and they have some things to do. And so, I just wanted to take this time to honor them, and I want to speak directly to you two if you could come up here so I... So, I'm not like... I just wanted to tell you both, I know that you never seek recognition and that you do this just because it's the kind of people that you are, and it's out of the kindness of your own hearts. But I just wanted to let you know that I see you and I notice you, and I love you very much, and I'm a better person because of you, and our school is better because of the both of you. So, thank you both so much for what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You're the best. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank the board real quick for everything you guys have done for the district and for having me here tonight. It's truly an honor. I also want to thank Ms. Sanchez Martinez just for her overwhelming support in everything we've done. I sincerely believe that none of our efforts would have taken off if it hadn't been for her. And then, I want to thank Kira too, because honestly, it's just so much work and so much unity to spread. I couldn't do it alone, so, thank you for that, Kira. You're amazing. Yeah, I'm really honored to be here and just serving the community, uniting our school, and I look forward to the rest of my term as student body president. (APPLAUSE)
Hi, I just wanted to echo what Violet was saying. Thank you to all of you on the D forty-nine board and for everyone in D forty-nine that helps make it a place where it's possible for student leaders to step up, because we have teachers and administrators and staff like Ms. Sanchez Martinez who are there for their students. And every time that Violet and I ever had a meeting with anyone, whether it was Mr. Horace or Ms. Stewart or Ms. Sanchez Martinez, we always left feeling supported and that we could do it, you know? So, this was a big project, but with the help of you guys, we pulled it off. And I'm just really excited that we were able to do that because I know that it meant a lot. Sorry, I'm a crier. I don't know if you guys knew this about me. But they were just really excited, and that made me so excited. And to be able to do it with Violet too, she's one of my best friends, so, I'm gonna stop crying now, but thank you, guys. (APPLAUSE) They're gonna give me a hug. I'm crying. Thank you.
All right, our next honoree is Monica Rosario, District Behavior Support Technician. Monica was nominated by Bridget Martin and Ashley Thorpe. Monica demonstrates exceptional creativity when she works with students to determine their motivation. She cares about the whole child and utilizes out-of-the-box strategies when supporting students with behaviors. So, if Monica and her nominators can come up here? (APPLAUSE)
Hey there. Monica is a walking ray of sunshine, and the kids always repeatedly ask for her by name. Monica demonstrates exceptional creativity when working with students and finds out what actually motivates them. She uses this motivation to drive behavior change. She takes initiative every time she works with students or staff, follows behavior plans that she is given, while also coming up with ideas that I didn't even think of. Monica is dedicated to her position in the district. She uses applied behavior analysis in a way that works in a classroom setting and is individualized based on the student she is working with and their needs. Monica has worked with some very challenging behavior kiddos this year and would show up every day to work with them with a smile on her face.
And I'd just like to add on to that, that Monica does deal with our most significant behaviors going on in our building. She responds immediately when kids are in crisis, and she sometimes has no information. Sometimes, we have a lot of information, but sometimes she's just going in there blind, and she has to immediately build relationships with the kid and with the staff and try to size it up to support everybody appropriately. And I know all of our buildings in the Falcon Zone truly appreciate the work that you've done out there. You are an incredible asset, and they would be really upset if you left. Please don't leave. Stay with us forever.
Well, thank you, guys. I just want to say Violet and Carol, you guys are amazing too. You guys are really good speakers. You made me cry. And I want to thank you guys. I want to thank Ashley and Bridget, everyone in Falcon. I just love the staff, the students, all the admin, so, thank you, everyone.
Okay, congratulations to all of our nominees. Before we wrap up, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Lori Thompson, President of the Board of Education, for final remarks.
First of all, I'd really... Is this off or on?
Very loud.
Okay, can you hear me? There we go. Violet and Kira, well, first of all, Kira, you knew that I cried at student board when you talked about this project because when my daughter was at Children's Hospital, we ended up with a blanket from a similar project, and I was really heartened that I got to share with you how much it meant to me and my daughter when that happened for us. So, I want to thank both of you for your leadership, for reaching out, and for caring for others. That is fantastic. And likewise with Monica, it sounds like you put in a hundred and ten percent to these students, especially at a time where we could have more significant challenges. So, you guys truly are the best of the best of District Forty-nine, and I want to thank you for that.
We know it's incredible individuals like the ones you met tonight who make the district truly outstanding. Thank you, and that will wrap up Fantastic Forty-nine. (APPLAUSE)
Fifteen minutes.
I think we've had like passing somewhere.
Yeah.
Like circles somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna be the third. It's like silent coverage.
No.
Just chatting.
Chatting out.
Chatting.
It's really great.
Yeah.
So until April 20. October 20. So. Supposed to be added in stage. The candy. Yes.
I feel excited, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm doing. That is just for me. Today, like many birthdays. I don't know. Yeah.
So.
But yeah.
Yeah.
There's also the impact.
I don't know.
No, it's on a. It's like.
It's a.
Yeah, it's like it's not. It's not like the.
First. There's. There's something. Right there. My mom's still sulking. So I told her.
Hey Marie, your son has a jersey and a basketball at my house.
Are you doing well, Ben?
Not great. They're coming down. My clothes are coming over. That's what needed.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi guys. Sure.
So you see.
Yeah.
How's life?
Oh, he's still here.
My phone just.
I feel. Justin. Go back to four. Oh, no, no. So definitely.
Shh.
Yeah. I wouldn't be able to. It's gonna be long.
Oh, wow.
It's like.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, sure. They were.
Yeah, it's quite unbelievable, like. At least to run around some basketball in the first class. Maybe like you don't think about. Oh, the sensors should be like. Why? You're like.
And I was trying.
This used to go in. Hours. That was.
I gotta pull this in.
Those regulation.
Well.
Like. Oh, my God. What happened? Forgot.
I didn't. This is. Okay. I just have a question.
I will have to. He goes. Looking.
Oh. So. Hello. Yes.
It's like he's twice.
Yeah, we said it long. Yeah, so. Yeah. It's all like. Yes. It's my research. No. Generally, my understanding. Teachers are. Sort of. Or. Exactly. So. Exactly. Exactly. But he. Slightly. Next. Because. Because.
Yeah, like. Oh, they're. Oh. Yeah. So. So. So.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education Regular Meeting. The time is six thirty P M. And I am calling this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
Devalla.
Here.
Heil.
Here.
Livia Wright.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Can we please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Devalla.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye. And that passes. We are on to public comment. We welcome comments from the stakeholders during District forty-nine's open forum. Please stay seated until your name is called by the Board of Education Chair. Then approach the podium to introduce yourself. Speak clearly into the microphone and keep your remarks respectful and orderly. Personal complaints against individuals connected with the district except for the board members or the superintendent are prohibited. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. The board will not respond during the forum, but may assign follow-on action to the superintendent. We encourage you to use the stakeholder grievance process for resolving concerns which may culminate in a formal appeal to the board. Thank you for participating. The views expressed in the forum are those of the commenters and do not represent official policy of District forty-nine or the Board of Education. And first up, this name looks vaguely familiar. Um, John Graham. And then behind you in the chairs to the left, I deed Suze Fisher. And it looks like Marlena Vincent.
Good evening. My name is John Graham. I'm a father, business owner, taxpayer. I've been involved in improving public education for students, parents, and staff for over a decade now and continue those efforts. I am in absolute support for Mountain View Academy contract with D forty-nine to be renewed for five years. Mountain View Academy is a high-performing school with over eighty percent parent and student satisfaction and approval. I just attended their recent Board of Education meeting and they govern with efficiency, effectiveness, and with transparency. The acting principal is well-known in Colorado for being an outstanding administrator, focused on improving student outcomes, and for high achievements in public education. Their two deans, one of which is new, understand the vision and goals of their board and are making a positive impact every day. I read the recent zone report recommending a conditional one-year contract approval, and I can honestly say the report does not meet the facts on the ground. I truly believe something is wrong in that report and that it does not reflect the D forty-nine cultural compass, nor our community vision and values for public education. It may be implicit bias or worse, I don't know. But I can call out several areas of concern in this report, but I will withhold that for now. Regardless, I believe there is a modest loss of decorum and process experience for this report to have made the light of day. The report flies in the face of our commitment to parent and student choice, educational transparency, our valued partnership with charter schools, and our cultural compass. A conditional one-year approval causes enormous chaos and negative effects among students, families, staff, and even the investors of public education in that particular school. We addressed similar issues two years ago. This is D forty-nine. I have every expectation of our esteemed superintendent. Welcome back to correct this situation and for the board to do the right thing regarding the renewal. This unwarranted tension between administration and our valued charter schools must stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Suze Fisher.
I'm Suze Fisher. I am not only a parent of several children who attend Mountain View Academy, I am also a D forty-nine employee, and I'm here to speak in support of Mountain View's charter renewal. Um, I was actually one of the parents who was interviewed for the charter renewal process. So I had a very firsthand of the interview process and everything that I said in my interview stands. We have had nothing but great and positive experiences at Mountain View. We made the significant and very intentional decision to go with Mountain View. We do live in D forty-nine and we chose our Mountain View over our district and zone school. Um, and again, I agree with everything that John said. The five years is what should be. We have had nothing but glowing time, glowing reviews of Mountain View. I have a child who's been there for their entire schooling period. And our trust in Mountain View is so great that we are a military family. When we PCS next year, we are going to actually be transferring to another N H A school in a different state. That is how much Mountain View is so important to us and how much we have loved our time there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I hope I have your date, your name right. Is it Bob Lena or is it Marlena?
Marlita.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm Marlita Vincent, and I am a parent of a student at M V A, a Mountain View Academy. Um, and I'm here to speak for the five-year renewal. Um, it is concerning that it's not already approved, that it is up for only a one-year um, temporary renewal. The school is important to several students and families. My son has been going to M V A since it opened. And um, the impact that has had on him is tremendous. And I know they've had some bumps there, but the testing of the student stand, that the, the school is excelling where it needs to excel. And um, I hope that now that the superintendent is back, that we can have this looked at and handled quickly for a five-year renewal.
Thank you so much. We are on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item to be pulled from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Can I get a vote?
Devalla.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye. And that passes. Now, we are on to the superintendent update.
Good evening, folks. Uh, Peter Hill, Superintendent, and I just have a, a small list of items tonight to, to mention. Um, we've had the opportunity to be in the news for, for several things recently, and I think we actually are on some newscasts this evening as well. Uh, a report came out in the Gazette based on C D E data that District forty-nine, as we've expected, uh, has, has become the district that serves the largest number of students in the El Paso County Pike's Peak region. And uh, we're gratified for that because that means that uh, our, our commitment to be the best choice is paying off both through our operated schools as well as our robust charter school academy. We have high standards for all of our schools, and that is attracting more out of district choice into District forty-nine than any other district in the state of Colorado. And so that's a big part of what is driving our continued growth in an era where, where the state and many schools districts are contracting. We are gratified that our portfolio continues to attract a lot of students. Um, and as an example of that, I got to spend some time today at an awards ceremony over at Remington Elementary School. Each year, there is a, a national award that is given out to two schools per state. And that award is based on the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, or E S E A. And it specifically calls out schools that are distinguished schools of excellence. That award in each state is administered by the Department of Education of that state. And this year, the Colorado Department of Education looked at Remington. They looked at their support for military-connected children. They looked at their support for students in whose home another lang, a, a language other than English is spoken. They looked at their support for special populations, and they looked at their overall achievement and growth scores. And as you know, Remington has been a very high-performing school, but it's also a Title One school, which means it serves a population of students who have some life obstacles, may not have as many resources in the home system. And Remington has been relentless in their commitment to all students. C D E recognized that. This is not something we applied for. We didn't know it was coming. Um, and to be, to be among that very, very small number of schools nationally is a tremendous achievement. So we were, we were gratified today. The commissioner came, a couple of other leaders of federal programs and, and their awards programs came and celebrated the Mustangs at Remington. So that was a, a, an even better reason to be in the news. Uh, because while we appreciate being bigger, we really, really appreciate delivering quality programs to our students. So that was fantastic recognition. Uh, recognition that we would not have preferred has also been in the news over the last couple of days uh, because our primary student information system, C I S, our primary vendor is Power School. They're not our exclusive vendor because we work with quite a few different systems, um, especially through concurrent enrollment and career technical education. But Power School is our primary student information system. And uh, a, a breach happened to Power School. So uh, an individual or, or a group of individuals gained access to a Power School set of credentials, a, a password identification, uh, an I D and password combination. And they used that to access data in multiple school districts around the country. Power School uh, has, has since um, deauthorized those credentials, and they are assuring us as well as all of our users that they will continue to monitor that data breach to make sure that that data is not being used, it's not being sold, it's not being uh, copied or added to other um, dark web or cloud-based uh, data repositories. Um, but I'm really proud of our team here. There are reasons why a company like Power School will not immediately go public with it, with this kind of an event because they want to work with law enforcement, take their guidance from those specialists. Uh, but at the point that, that Power School began to inform districts, they informed us promptly. They gave us additional detail, which we rapidly turned around to our community. We are continuing to do more analysis of what uh, data was pulled and um, what vulnerabilities there might do. We are gratified that some of the highest security kinds of information, things like social security numbers or, or credit card numbers or bank account numbers, none of that was included. But some of what was included in this breach is private, personal information, and so we're going to be diligent. Power School is offering identity monitoring or credit monitoring services. Uh, credit monitoring doesn't help students a whole lot, but identity monitoring does. So they're going to calibrate what they offer based on the age and, and the situation of the person that was exposed in the breach. But we're talking about thousands and thousands of District forty-nine students, parents, and alumni, and parents of alumni because uh, this goes back to twenty seventeen. So we're taking this very seriously. Um, we, we appreciate Power School's responsiveness. This story will continue. Um, and we will continue to give you updates and give our, our parent community updates. As we start getting people signed up for these identity protection services, we'll learn more about um, how well that, that helps them mitigate the impacts or the exposure. learn more about how well that, that helps them mitigate the impacts, or the exposure. I would like to offer a personal thanks to Dr. Nancy Lamond, who sat here in my stead while I was in Alaska caring for my, my parents. Thank you for your, your care and your prayers. I spent most of the month of December in hospital rooms, and each of my parents' separate incidents were on Flight for Life helicopter medevacs into Anchorage. So it was a very challenging time personally, but it gave me great comfort and support to know what a strong team we have here, how communicative they are, even from remote Alaska, I was able to zoom in and, and have meetings and stay connected on email. But mostly, I took care of family first, and I trusted the team here to do their great jobs, and they did great jobs. So thank you to Nancy, thank you to the team, thank you to the board for accommodating that. And there'll be, there'll be a little bit more of that story as we, as we go along in our one-on-ones. And finally, it's going to be cold next week. So you should know, and our community is, is already aware, temperatures are going to be into the negatives. Ambient air temperature, wind chills, will be in the, the double digits, maybe even, I've seen forecasts as low as 30 below wind chill. I think it's warming up a bit from that on the forecast. But we're going to be very attentive and very careful about what we need to do and how early we need to make our decisions. So we just ask people to be extra attentive, since we're already on a three-day weekend. We won't be back into school when the really cold weather hits, and so please just pay attention to our normal channels, our social media, and our, our flash alerts, so that we can give you the fastest information as, as fast as we can. And that is our superintendent's report. There's some additional information in, in our written report from our different departments, and I'd encourage you to look at that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up from any of those topics. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to Student Board of Representatives and any updates that you may have, and we're going to start off with Megan.
At Falcon High School, we, we're having a great year so far. We, this weekend, we are hosting a charity event for a little girl named Penny with, who's battling with cancer. We're working on, it's class battles, raising money for Penny. And this weekend, she's coming to our school, and we're hosting a benefit to support her, and yeah, that's, lots of things we're having at Falcon. We're also having, our winter sports are wrapping up. We had our wrestlings, sorry, senior night, and lots of good things going on at Falcon, so yeah.
What night is that benefit?
It's Saturday night.
And what time?
It's at 6:30, I'm pretty sure.
So if you get a chance to get out to Falcon High School Saturday night at 6:30 for that fundraiser, that would really be incredible. Nikos?
Yeah, hello. So I guess I'll start off with the more sour news, so we can end on a higher note. But we did sadly have a passing in the iConnect Zone, which we were informed of at our school this Monday. Sandy Smith, she was one of the big people within our Falcon homeschool program, and that's run right out of our school. So we had a few dogs from the dog therapy program. They were in our school Monday. So yeah, we're all there for family of Sandy Smith. But, and the things that will be happening in the future, we have a vex robotics competition that is coming up on Friday and Saturday for middle schoolers. Looking forward to that. I will be the emcee there. Good to say, whoa, look a robot. I don't know what's going on. I don't build the robots, I just talk about them. And then next week, hopefully, weather willing, we will be hosting our freshman night, which our student council is finally putting on. The original intent was get to know your fellow freshmen. Hopefully, they've done that over the course of this semester up to this point, but they'll get to hang out with them still, have some fun. So yeah, we're getting back into the 2025 school year, getting back on our schedule at the campus. Other than that, I don't have anything more.
Thank you very much. Director Schmidt?
I don't have a lot tonight. I just, we just really had a very, very nice Christmas and New Year, and I hope everybody else did too. Looking forward, I've got some trainings that I'm looking at doing, some meetings, and a little bit of curriculum review out in Falcon, so that's kind of what's on board. I didn't do much over Christmas, so not regarding school board stuff anyway, so.
Thank you. Director Heil?
So just for everybody who's concerned about the data breach, know that my child's information was included in it, and so your concerns are very much my concerns. I'm going to talk about adequacy studies, woo-hoo. So between local and state share, Colorado allocates just under $10 billion in education funding, funding. As anyone who's been paying attention knows, that is not enough. So last year, the state commissioned two independent studies to determine what it would cost for us to have adequate funding for our schools. So first, they had to determine what does adequate mean, and then determine what that would cost. I participated in one of the studies. This one looked at the district and school performance framework, as well as applicable laws. It then built a model of what a set of schools look like that can deliver performing ratings, informed by scientific research, accounting for demographics, poverty, special needs, English learners, et cetera. I sat in on a panel where we reviewed all aspects of the models, teacher ratios, staffing in all areas, et cetera. Once we had constructed the model, then it can be used to scale out to, you know, individual schools that actually exist, districts, and the state. So no surprises. The result indicated that we are about $3.5 billion short. And of the two studies, each using different methodologies, this was the one that came in the lowest. So the legislature requested these studies to inform the public and their debate about fixing our school funding. Whether that leads to any meaningful improvement depends upon the legislature and on the public, since we have to approve any new tax increases. I can also tell you that, in the unlikely event that voters approve an education moonshot and we have funding matching the adequacy studies for our next budget year, we would still be operating under constraints. We've talked several times this year about our deferred maintenance. So our buildings are in fairly good shape for now, but we have about $135 million in deferred maintenance due over the next five years, for which we have budgeted $3 million per year. Anyone who's following the news may have heard of the events at Jenkins Middle School, which shows us what can happen if building problems are not addressed. For the adequacy study I participated in, facilities were deliberately excluded. Nevertheless, any progress is good. I am happy to see that these studies are out there now as an important first step, and I will be monitoring how they affect the legislature in the current session, and I'll keep you informed.
Thank you. Director Livia Wright?
So I just have two quick things. As the Falcon Ed Foundation liaison for the board, I'm happy to say we do have a date for our event. The event is going to be on April 11th with a new venue. The venue will be at the Antlers. So stay, yep, so stay tuned. The theme is 80s, so start looking back in your closets and remembering the big hair and leg warmers and all the fun things from when some of us were still in high school. And I look forward to seeing as many of you there as who can come. Save the dates, should be out within the next week, I believe. The other piece of information is on January 21st, El Paso Council, PTA, is hosting their reflections awards for the county. I know for a fact that multiple District 49 students have placed. I'm not just going to, I'm going to wait till I have a list of all of them, because right now I only know the two from Falcon High who placed, but I want to make sure anyone else in D-49 is recognized as well. If you'd like to view that artwork from our county and all of the PTA schools that our students produced, and see who is moving on to state, to the state-level competition, it is at Palmer High School now. The venue was moved when Jenkins was closed, but it is still January 21st. Doors open at 5:30, and you'll be able to view those, that artwork and expression from 5:30 to 6:30 with an awards ceremony for the students from 6:30 to 8:00.
Thank you. Director Devalla?
Yes, I hope, I hope everyone had a great Christmas and New Year's, and were able to spend time with friends and family. I personally had a great Christmas with my family and got to spend some good quality time doing activities and playing with my daughter, which I don't normally get to do during the academic school year. So I enjoyed that quality time with her. It actually has been two months since I attended a board meeting. Unfortunately, I missed the Vista Ridge Showcase Board Meeting. I definitely wanted to be there, and I really wish I could have been. I did hear some, that, that some truly amazing things happened at that meeting, that the elementary school choir performed beautifully, and it was a, a great event. Many parents and community members were very impressed with the tour of the new CTE wing, and thankfully, I was able to tour the new wing earlier this year, and it was exciting. It is very exciting that we now are able to offer a variety of CTE courses at Vista Ridge High School. And I, I don't have much else. I enjoyed my break.
You know, it's kind of interesting, because we had one meeting in November, and we had one meeting in December, and that is a little bit off schedule, and now to be back here at Creekside, there's a little bit of an adaptation that goes along with it. I attended the Gifted and Talented Art Fair here that was held here at Creekside. I have, if any of the board members are interested, I have pictures and videos. It was absolutely incredible, just the quality of the artwork, the creativity, and it was a really, really wonderful event. It was exciting for me to attend the ribbon, ribbon cutting at the Panther Den. That is just such a unique concept to help kids transition into middle school, and the new building is absolutely fabulous. Some of the things that really stood out to me is they have some really neat ceiling designs in the entrance and in some of the classrooms. The gymnasium, if you go back to when you were going to school, did your gymnasium have natural light? And they had some high-end set windows. The whole building really did a great job of capturing natural light. But just to watch the genesis from that being the site of a charter school, to it rolling over to part of Horizon, to this new building, and the future expansion opportunities that are there, that was a lot of fun. I also went on a tour of the CTE wing at Vista Ridge. I mean, seriously, drone soccer. That was so neat to see the robotics. We had fashion design. There's even a course there that teaches them how to develop gaming codes, complete with gaming chairs. Then I had a conversation with a wonderful teacher who was there working on credit recovery with some of the students, but it was, it was really exciting to tour that building. I was at the topping-off ceremony with Superintendent Hiltz, where we all got to sign the last beam they were putting in place, and watching it come to fruition was just absolutely wonderful. We had our Student Board of Representatives meeting, you weren't there, and it was a lot of fun. We talked about the cell phone policy, and what the kids had to share was really interesting, because they said if you approach it with, "do this because I said so," that they'll work harder to defeat the system. But if you convey the why, it is more impactful. And the last thing that I found interesting is I asked them what they thought about removing fact-checking from Facebook, and they all looked kind of blank, and then they admitted that their grandparents are on Facebook. So they were not aware of it, that they are on Instagram. So thank you for reminding me that I'm a grandparent. And that's all I have. Thank you. Now we are on to action items. Can I get a motion for action item 7.1?
I move to approve the job description for Commercial Kitchen Appliance HVAC Tech.
Second. Any further discussion? Student Board, are you reading about this? This is the HVAC position. Those of you who were at Vista Ridge that we were talking about to maintain our appliances, and they were talking that they were subbing it out to a vendor that is not in Colorado Springs. So this could end up being a cost savings for our district. Is there any further discussion on this? Can I get a vote?
Devalla?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for action item 7.2?
I move to approve the zone boundary changes.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a quick comment. Because we were unable to build the new middle school, this is completely necessary. I just want to make sure that hopefully there's going to be exceptions where we can for siblings.
And I don't know if the Student Board had a chance to look at your packet, or what was uploading, what we're talking about, designating parts for the power zone and parts for the Falcon Zone, also based on future growth and expansion. So do you guys have any comments about divvying that up between zones?
Sadly, on the iPad right in front of me, I wasn't able to get anything to load, because they're so kind. But beyond that, logically, it makes sense to reestablish those boundaries with time, because obviously, in the same manner that the district as a whole is expanding, number one now, the individual zones will also be expanding. So it's kind of odd that we wouldn't want to continue to make sure that those are being set up in the correct manner.
I definitely agree. My iPad wasn't working either, so I wasn't able to look at it. But I, as places are growing, I think it is really important to look and look ahead for the future, and I think that would be a really great thing to do.
And do you guys know what a pertscheron is?
Oh, a what?
Pertscheron. We were talking about one of the developments there.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm unaware.
I'm just horsing around with you. It's a type of horse. Director?
Horse, horsein' around.
Yeah.
I just, as a clarification, I believe in the presentation, the students who are changing schools, that's from a prior boundary decision that was made when Stetson moved. This boundary, I believe, is predominantly regarding an area that doesn't, that is under development. So the pertscheron development is going in, and prior to those homes developing, we're designating that, moving that into the power zone, so that when families purchase the homes, they already know what that feeder system's going to be. And that movement is based in part because anyone who lives out there knows pertscheron isn't the only place in the Falcon area that's getting developed, and so it's balancing those new developments. But the Stetson Elementary boundary change already occurred. That already is, has been moved in, that was moved into the Sand Creek Zone, I believe, last year. And so that, they're in, they're in the phase-in process of, of having kids, of the Stetson kids, families being able to choose for, I think, another year, which middle school to go to as they, their families transition from one zone to the other. But the school itself transitioned, I believe, a year ago into the power zone, or from the power zone into the Sand Creek Zone.
Yeah, and, and also what's uploaded is the transition plan, where they talk about how I was going to adjust for transportation, and the options for the, some of the kids that are currently in Skyview. So you're right, I was blending a couple things together. Director Schmidt? Oh, I thought I saw your hand up. Anyone else? Okay, can I get a vote?
Devalla?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for action item 7.3?
I move to approve the 2425 amended budget.
Second. Any discussion? Director Schmidt?
My comment on this is that we still need to look at improving the way the budget is presented, so that it follows State Statute 24, 2244-105. The statute outlines a summary budget format that is understandable to any layperson, and includes many other guidelines that Colorado school districts should be following. Director Heil and I waited on working on this until the audit was done. We may now need to wait until we hire a new chief financial officer. I just wanted to remind the board that we still do need to take time to make sure that we are following the state statute regarding the budget contents and presentation. I had Lynette hand out the Colorado School Budget from the Department of Education, the rules on the budget. So you have that, and then I asked her if she could post it, and I think she will be able to do that.
And I think we had discussed looking at either one of our quarterly trainings, or else doing the two-by-two format on that. So that's something we can definitely look further into. But I was, earlier I had asked... But I was, earlier I had asked Lynette to get me some information. And Peter, if you could remind me what ASBO stands for?
ASBO is the Association of School Business Officials International. And the Colorado affiliate of ASBO that we, that we work with the most is CASBO. Not very creative, but very clear.
And they have actually given District Forty-nine that same transparency award since 2016. But I don't disagree that understanding the depth and the breadth of school finance would be worthwhile. And so it's something we could look at as a board for part of our quarterly trainings. Because we did talk about the two by two model, but we don't have a CFO yet. And I know that CASB offers additional trainings. So, you know, I just, I'd like to hear from both the Student Board of Representatives and the board if that's something you would be interested in us setting up. For those who are interested, a board training on school finance. So that's just something to get back to me with. So does the student board have anything to say about the amended budget?
Yeah, again, the iPads couldn't load any files, so sadly not.
Neither do either iPads.
Do you mean if you have nothing to look at, you have nothing to say about it? I know the feeling. Director Heil?
Yeah, I was also going to mention that we won an award for transparency. And so that kind of, you know, contradicts the notion that we may be violating state statute. I think we're very well in compliance. But with that said, I do agree that there are ways that we could improve our reporting to make it a little bit more accessible to the layperson. And I think that it would be appropriate to engage, once we've got a new CFO on boarded. And that might be something that we, we ask them to take on.
Director Schmidt?
I'm not saying that we're not being transparent, so let's get that straight. I just would like to look at the format and make sure that it's following what the state statute says. It's not a transparency issue.
Director Devola?
Yes, the budget is probably the hardest thing to understand when my background is not accounting at all. And so I wholeheartedly agree that we need to have some really targeted training. I have attended the school finance trainings at CASB. However, they're very surface level or nation, or Colorado wide level. And I would love to have District Forty-nine specific level. How do I read this spreadsheet? How do I do this? So I believe that would be a great thing to have on our calendar of having that training, once we have people who are able to train it available.
Nikos?
Yeah, I guess while we're troubleshooting that, I can at least try to provide some contextual input. Beyond just the necessity of the board members being able to comprehend the agenda and how it's laid out, I think that it also could be beneficial if, in the future, if it's not being done already, there's also some form of graphic that's on an even more understandable level, not just for the board, but for parents and students within the district as well. Because while the actual budget choices may not be that relevant to us as students on a personal level, it's still interesting to see what's going on in the district, especially for students who may have an interest in that and they want a bit more of an introduction without having to read through however many pages of spreadsheets.
Oh, and one thing I forgot to touch on a little while ago. As far as Jenkins Middle School, I had a discussion this afternoon with Parth Malpakin, the board president for District Eleven. They have actually been following the recommended schedule laid out by the fire department in line with structural repairs and things that they had to do. So they actually were following the schedule that was laid out to them. And then things flipped when the fire department decided to close them with four days' notice. So it wasn't like they were pushing it off and pushing it off. He said that it would have been great if the board could have dug deeper back when it was first built because the structural deficiencies began to show up the very first year that that middle school was open. So in the meanwhile, they were receiving structural reports, fire safety reports. And they had lined up and set aside money to follow the suggested path of repairs. And then everything changed. So I can tell you, as a school board member, you prepare the best you can. You try to look for things that could crop up and you could still really get hit with a surprise. So it's a very difficult situation for District Eleven and they really have to scramble of, where do we put the students? And I hope we never have to face anything like that in District Forty-nine. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the amended budget? Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Devola.
Aye.
Heil.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Schmidt. No.
Thompson.
Aye, and that passes. Can I get a motion for action item seven point four?
I move to approve the two new choir course proposals as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Director Schmidt?
Sorry, I have a lot to say tonight. On the choir course, the course proposal says that having multiple classes will allow D forty-nine to take more students to CHASA team choir events. Both my kids were part of CHASA athletic teams and their practice hours were before or after school. I was part of a choral ensemble and when I was in school and we competed at the state level also, but our practices were also held after school. In both instances, there was no daily class time or credit awarded. It was all extracurricular. So I'm, I'm just wondering why we're using class time and awarding credits to prepare students in an extracurricular competition when we don't do it for athletes?
Okay, Director Livia Wright?
So first, as a point of order, there is a fine art graduation requirement of a year. And the choir courses in part meet that graduation requirement. And similar to sports, we also have a physical education requirement. Students can take more classes than what's required in any area that we offer. PE and fine arts also included, science as well. You can take more than four years of science if you would like. However, we also support both pieces of that in that, so for example, physical education isn't, there isn't just one physical education class offered that all students take. We have advanced physical education courses that some of our student athletes may choose to take that are things like strength and conditioning that actually prepare them for careers in areas that involve physical fitness. The same is true for the fine arts. We have students who become artists and musicians and performers and that is a career path. And we owe it to our students to offer opportunities for them to grow those skills and that career path. And simply because CHASA sponsors additional competitions doesn't necessarily mean that they're, that they're solely extracurricular. CHASA sponsors many things that are related to various areas of academics. And personally, I believe the arts are a part of the academics. And that someone who is artistically inclined and gifted has an equal right to develop that skill and talent that can lead to careers as well as just enjoyment. My choir was a part of my academic day and it was a show choir and a competition won thirty years ago. And it was an important part of my education. But I don't think we should be saying that we're only offering the pathways that develop into the engineers and technicians. We also need to develop our artists and our creators. And expanding these opportunities so that our artists and creators have a place to develop that talent and to show that talent is incredibly important. Also, there's plenty of brain research out there that shows that math achievement goes up when music achievement goes up because it uses the same part of the brain in a different way. So all of these pieces are intertwined. And so it's incredibly important that we offer as many students as we can the opportunity to expand their opportunities in the arts rather than restrict them. Falcon High's music program is so successful that they have more students who want to be involved than they have opportunity to be involved. This is an area of student interest, it's an area of parent interest and an area of pride for the Falcon community. And for those reasons, I strongly support continuing supporting this in our school. My child attends there and doesn't choose to participate in that. But I have one who did and for whom it was of value. And I know myself that having that music didn't interfere with my academics. It enhanced them as a student as well.
Director Heil?
So basically, everything Marie just said. And also, you know, music theory is in and of itself an academic discipline. I've seen studies that demonstrate that young children who study music, their brain chemistry or their brain structures change in ways that promote higher order thinking. And then that can then be tracked and they can see that they're, they're performing better throughout their lives. And that having these classes during the day drives student engagement. That there are so many students who come into our classrooms, they're exhausted, they're disinterested. And the reason they come in and they put in the time in the math and the social studies and the English classes is so that they can go to their choir classes. So it just provides so many benefits to, to our, to our student body.
And Director Schmidt, if you could hold tight for just a moment. I wanted the student board because they also had their hands up to weigh in on this.
Yeah, sure, I did not have my hand up, but I did have input anyway, so that's fine. They're up on the table, that's good enough. I, I definitely do think that there is a lot of relevance in the introduction of, for the choir programs. Reading through this, two hundred and sixty stu, two hundred and sixty-six students involved just within the choir program at FHS is no small number, especially for a fine art. I know some students may be wary of joining or have difficulties with choir. And reading through this, it seems that the introduction of these courses is just to provide further ease for that, which I think will assist in expanding upon that. And you did kind of pose that there may be an imbalance in the choir extracurriculars compared to the physical extracurriculars. But to my more limited understanding, which I'm sure Megan could expand on as a FHS student, they also do have a good few avenues within FHS for physical. I know they have football, baseball, lots of, lots of different forms of hitting balls. But I think that there wouldn't really be an imbalance. I think that it's simply providing the opportunity with the introduction of this for students who may not otherwise be able to.
As a student who goes to FHS and is a part of the choir program, I think this is really important. Our choir program is growing a lot. And as you were saying, with the imbalance of physical activity and then the fine arts activity, we do have a lot of lap over with our, any, as he was saying, ball players. And the choir program is a big overlap of all different kinds of things. It's, it's a great way to build our, our school community. And I think it was, as our choir program is growing, I think it's a great idea to add some more, some more beginner level choirs that will help invite people to the Amazing World Choir.
Director Schmidt? Director Devola?
Yes, as someone who was in choir since third grade, I very highly value the benefit of choir and the difficult skill of reading music. And music class even begins in the elementary level. And I very, very much a huge advocate of having that in high school. I don't see a disadvantage of having it during school hours as long as they're meeting the required requirements that they need in order to graduate, in order to be successful in school. And so I definitely support both of these.
Director Schmidt?
I'm not dissing on choirs, I really am not. I love choir, I did choir. The piece that I'm worried about is the awarding the credit, possibly even four of them in choir because you can take it four, four times, you know, during your, your year. You are able to get a credit for that, but you don't get a credit. I mean, I know you get a, one physical education credit, but they don't get to practice during school hours. Do you see what I'm saying here?
Well.
Excuse.
I have these two gentlemen moving up like a couple of mafia enforcers. So I think they want to participate as well as Superintendent Hiltz.
But I do, I do want to correct one misunderstanding. We have lots of students that practice their athletic skills during the school day or do strength training or other kinds of conditioning. As a son, I had a son that came through our district program and he absolutely was, was playing sports and doing his conditioning and training and preparation during school day for credit. And so.
For credit.
And so if you, if you look at the nine o'clock of the cultural compass to the right, you'll see the big rock to offer exceptional choices. A program that is drawing two hundred and sixty-six students and growing appears to be an exceptional choice that students and parents want. And so I think there's a, there's a strong argument that we're consistent with our strategic priority and even our vision statement, the best choice, that we're offering choir as a choice. Maybe you can correct or amplify our understanding of the credit relationship for choir courses?
Yeah, so Brian Smith, Falcon Zone Superintendent. We have a variety of options at the school where students can earn credit both inside and outside of the classroom for all the different hours and things that they spend. And I know the choir program in particular, there's a lot of extra time they put in both inside and outside of the school. And so we're wanting to make sure that they do earn credit for all that time they're spending in those academic pieces. Does that answer your question?
To some degree. Again, it's not, it's not, I don't, I don't dislike choir. I don't dislike the idea of them getting a credit for it. I just don't think it's fair in between the athletics and the choir. And I think it's an imbalance.
The athletic, so if you are an athlete, like I have a student athlete, they can choose to take four years of physical education. And when they choose to take four years of physical education, they are not choosing PE one oh one. They are taking strength and conditioning one, strength and conditioning two. They take things like personal training. So there are options for people who are athletic to pursue under the PE credits, just like there are options for those who are musically inclined in the music programs. And similar to athletics, the musical and the plays are extracurriculars, just like athletic sports competitions are extracurriculars. So there is a component in which they can explore and expand those skills academically within the school day for both groups of students. There are also manners in which they explore and expand those opportunities through clubs and extracurriculars. For choir students and musically inclined students, those are extracurricular clubs and the auditioned plays. For athletes, I would argue they have more extracurricular opportunity than the musicians do at some level because they have a different sport they can try out for every, every season. But in both cases, there are avenues within the school day and avenues outside the school day. Those within the school day, they get credit. And I believe actually for PE, I have a child who never took PE because she got it credited through JROTC because she was on the march, competition marching team, which she gave up her mornings for and got credit for. I believe my son got varsity, got credit for his physical, one of his physical education credits was because he was on the varsity soccer team. So in both cases, there are ways we also credit what they're doing outside of the academic day and allow them to earn some of those graduation credits. So there is actually a balance for our athletes and our artistics. From my perspective as a parent who's had students go through the graduation requirements recently at our high schools.
Director Devola?
Yeah, and to add on to that, I never had to take PE ever because I was always involved in sports. So I was like, PE, what's that? I don't know.
You know, I wanted to add something just along the same lines. We have some really cool, really cool events coming up. It is the three point seven five awards ceremonies for all of our high schools. And each of those kids speak. And the one consistent theme I've heard, they were involved with choir. They were involved with drama. They were involved with ROTC. They were involved with extracurricular activities, sporting events. sporting events. And so as to, I do believe it helps with brain development. I participated in choir when I was in high school. My brother Michael participated with both the Madrills, I think, and also with, I can't remember if it was Michael or Todd who was part of Sound Unlimited. One of my brothers at Mitchell High School participated in their music program. He is still a drummer to this day. He actually once won the Guitar Center Drum Off, and he was the only participant over 40. And to this day, he is currently doing Zeppelin Retro Band, the Todd Williams Jazz Trio. He helped start Sofa Killers. So this carried on throughout his life where he participated in music. We used to joke in our family that, you know, we'd name everyone who played different instruments. And when it got to mom, we always said that she played the radio. So we had trumpets, drums, we had guitar, we had piano, we had a lot of choir participants, and I do think it makes a difference. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything else?
Sean O'Connor, Principal Falcon High School. I'll just add that these courses are just enhancing existing structures. If you think about in a band, an instrumental band, you have your woodwinds and your brass, and sometimes a director might want to break them up so they can provide enhanced instruction to a specific skill. These courses allow that to occur. This is not adding anything as far as staffing or cost to what we're already doing. It's just allowing us by the course title to break these sections up and give us an opportunity to enhance our training for the students.
Okay, I think we've had a lot of discussion on this. Can I get a vote, please?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes. Bear with me. Never put in eye drops when you're trying to read a form, okay? Can I get a motion for action item 7.5?
That's the one we just did, I believe. That's okay. I think we're on 7.6.
Okay, can I get a, it's a different course proposal, I think.
Okay, I move to approve the Modern Performance in Music course proposal. Second?
Any discussion? Director Schmidt?
Okay, I'm not dissing on Modern Performance, okay? The proposal states that this course is funded through building expenses to supply classroom materials. I just want to know what building expenses are. Where's that money trough, I guess?
And it looks like we have our Sand Creek principal coming up to answer that.
Thank you. Yes, so the building expenses would basically be through our current FTE. So there is flexibility right now in our choir teacher's schedule. So we are in the opposite position right now with choir as Falcon is. We're in a building phase, and so we need to find different ways to serve our students. She currently has some smaller courses that we were able, and in some cases, we weren't able to offer as much as we would have liked, because there wasn't enough student interest. And so now we're looking for different ways to serve students who aren't yet taking advantage of choir or of the arts. With the ones that we see, they're walking around the hallways. I saw one walking around today. He was performing during passing period. He was playing his guitar during passing period with some of his friends. And so we're looking for different ways to serve those students as well.
So FTE is what?
It's, well, it's technically like full-time employee, but that's a term that we use internally when we're saying and we're talking about how many course sections we're going to be offering. This teacher did not have as many students that she would need to, or that she should be serving. And so we need to come up with some new courses so that she can have a full teaching load and fulfill the need that our students have.
So the full-time employee, her money is paying for these classroom materials?
No, ma'am, that would be through her teaching load, through her employment.
What's paying for the materials?
That is through our current building budget. Thank you.
Student Board, do you have any questions about this course proposal? Are we online yet?
We're pretty much out of that one.
Okay.
But yeah, no questions on this? I just, I definitely think it's a good idea. We were just discussing the benefits of participating in choral programs, but I think that there's an equal benefit to gaining any form of musical knowledge, which this allows for for students who may not participate otherwise.
Yes, I agree. I think this is a great idea and concept to bring in musically inclined students and build Sand Creek's fine arts program.
Any other discussion?
Again, I just wanted to know where the money was coming from.
Can I get a vote, please?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. And can I get a motion item for 7.6?
I move to approve the Leadership Council Athletics Course Proposal.
Second?
Any discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. Can I get a motion for action item 7.7?
I move to approve the World History and Geography Course Proposal.
Second?
Any discussion? Director Schmidt?
So part of me thinks that this is a good idea to combine these two, because they have information that goes hand in hand together. A part of me wonders if it wouldn't be best to keep these separate class for each subjects, because many colleges do want full credit of each. If colleges across the country require incoming students to have geography credit and world history credit, why would we not provide that for our students? It kind of seems like a manipulation of one credit to be transcribed as two. And the reasoning in the proposal was because they don't want to require the department to offer two separate year-long courses, which we do not have the FTE to offer. So if we don't have full-time employment to teach these, we might want to look at that. I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding the FTE very well, so maybe I should meet with someone and get a little more information on what FTE, how that works, because I clearly am not getting that. But I just think if colleges want one credit, full credit of history, and one full credit of geography, that we should provide that for our students.
Director DiVola?
Just some clarifying. The way that I understood it was that it's an actual full-year course, and that they would be able to get the credit they need for both geography and world history. Is that not, is that not, am I not understanding that correctly?
No, I don't know. The colleges aren't looking for a credit in geography. They're looking for a year-long course in world history. And, right? So, and the proposal is that really geography is a huge piece of world history. And so instead of offering a semester-long course of world history and a semester-long course of geography, they're recognizing the interrelationship, and they're changing it to a full-year course of world history that includes the geography. That was my understanding of the explanation. Ms. Ritz is here to actually probably clarify that, but...
Good evening. Teresa Ritz, Power Zone Superintendent. So currently, Vista Ridge offers a semester of geography and a semester of world history. So that is transcripted as 0.5 credit for geography, 0.5 for world history, and some universities are looking for a year-long. That, geography, in some cases, colleges will not accept a 0.5 credit as credit for the course requirements for world history, I believe.
Yeah, it's world history, because Falcon High has a full-year world history, which meets that. And then they do a separate, currently a separate geography half-credit that may or may not apply.
And it's also about teaching world history along with geography and the interconnectedness that you spoke about as well.
Director DiVola?
Under the rationale, it says colleges across the nation require incoming students to have a geography credit and a world history credit. That's what it says in the rationale on the page.
And in some cases, some colleges want those, want a year versus a semester.
Of just one, okay.
I think it depends on the college.
So what, I guess the question is, would colleges accept a world history, geography combined class as a full credit?
That's my understanding, yes. That they've done that research, and that's the rationale behind this, is because some of our students are choosing universities that are expecting that.
Cool, I'm cool with that.
Yeah, and I think that was covered at the Vista Ridge meeting when the course proposal was still there. Student Board, I see you've got, I see Nikos has his hand up, and I assume Megan...
Yeah, I'm just curious, with this conversion to be one class, what would that credit look like on a transcript? Because currently, it's two separate half-credits. What would that actually be listed as?
It would be one, one full credit.
And one, one full world history credit?
It would be the course is world history and geography.
Okay, so the credit itself would include both within it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Megan, did you?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Oh, Superintendent Hiltz?
I think I can clarify this. Both as a former social studies teacher, taught world history and geography and a bunch of other things. Colorado has something called the HEAR requirements, or the Higher Education Admissions Requirements. And those requirements in the social sciences are at least one unit, they want three years total, but at least one unit of US or world history. This is our state university system requirement. Selective schools may have other requirements. But if I'm a state admissions officer and I see a full-year course of world history and geography, that looks a lot like a credit in world history to me, and it is. It's almost impossible to teach human geography without teaching history. It is possible to teach history without geography, but it's incomplete. So both as an educator in this space and also just as an administrator, I support this recommendation. There will be a limited number of students who are going to highly selective universities that may want to see one of each. But that's unusual. A geography requirement is an unusual college requirement. A world history is a very common requirement. And so we are, we are serving our students better by giving them a single credit that most colleges will accept.
So thank you for clarifying that. It was only because it said what Jamie Lynn read, so, thank you.
Director DiVola?
So am I to understand there's a lot of universities who say that you could take world history or US history? You don't have to have US history in order to go to college?
In Colorado, the higher education requirement is world or US history.
That's terrible. That's a travesty.
You should run for office. Wait, you did.
World, like, they must have US history. So we, as a school district, we still require US history, correct? As us, as a district, to graduate?
We do not. We require social studies, and depending on whether they, depending on which pathway they go through, students might take an integrated US course, they might, we do require civics, but it can be embedded in other courses. And some of our students go on and take concurrent enrollment, and the concurrent enrollment history course they take might not be a US history course. But if it is a college-level social sciences or social studies or history course, then they meet these HEAR requirements that I'm talking about. So it is possible that a District 49 student could graduate without US history. That's your direct question? Yes, that is possible. It's not our normal pathway or our standard pathway. Our core curriculum involves US history, but it is an option for, it's a choice that some of our students may make.
So our next task is to make sure that we have the requirement they graduate with US history. Thank you. Now I know my task behind me, before me.
Okay, are there any further comments on this? Can I get a vote, please?
DiVola? Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. Can I get a motion for action item 7.8?
I move to approve the Speech and Debate Course Proposal.
Any discussion? Director Schmidt?
It's me again. Again, this course is using class time to award credits to prepare students for an extracurricular competition, which is moot now. I think the ever ubiquitous navel gazing of character development and mapping emotions is just embedded in everything. Can we give teens a break, please? My biggest concern, though, is that students' grades will be affected if they do not participate in a certain number of these competitions. And I don't know that I agree with that.
Nikos, I'm going to get to you in just a minute. And Jamie Lynn, you don't know this, but at the Vista Ridge meeting, I specifically mentioned you with this course, so I would like to hear what you have to say about it.
That's why I had my hand raised. This is actually a huge passion of mine, is competitive speech and debate. Not because I took it in high school, I actually hated it in high school. Did not like speaking or talking at all. Funny that I'm up here. So one of the things that I think that we have lost as a nation is our ability to debate each other in a respectful, civil, and a way that different-minded people are able to share their opinions and thoughts and ideas in a way that brings people to the table, honestly. And I think we've lost that as a society. So I would love to be able to have that more embedded in these courses, and this does start in the high school. And one of my favorite things that I remember doing, and it wasn't actually a debate class, it was our advanced biology class in high school where we had to debate, well, found a blank, we had to debate creationism versus evolution. And we were required to debate and come up with background and information on both. And I was actually put on the evolution team, even though I believe in creationism. And so it helped me understand the other people's opinions and where they were coming from, and forced me to be able to debate why evolution is the right one versus creationism. So that was a big, big thing that I was able to deal with. Now luckily, the creation team technically won the debate, which means my team lost, but it was a very good learning experience on how to have a civil conversation and not hate people who disagree with you. So I fully support this course.
Nikos, she had your hand up?
Some of you may be very surprised to find out that I enjoy to talk. I know that, yeah, gasps across the room. But I think that courses like this are great to have, not just for the people that enjoy them, but for the people that wish to pursue a prowess in speaking. And this allows them to do so. And as for the concerns of failure to obtain high grades by not attending competitions, I'm reading here, "opportunities to prepare for academic conversations and competitions." To me, this doesn't sound as if... To me, this doesn't sound as if failure to attend competitions will reflect, will reflect negatively in grades. And the directive of this class is to provide the students who are already participating in debate and speech through the club, which is, which is mentioned here, but to allow the students who are already putting the effort into that through the club to also have the capability to gain credit there. So, I definitely don't see any negatives within that.
Director Heil?
So, as somebody who earned college credit for a speech class, I can tell you that it's absolutely an academic topic. But also, and Ms. Ritz, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is essentially elective, right? So this, this counts as a, as a semester's elective credit?
Yes, that's correct. And students who are in the, the competitive speech will be the students who take this course.
And do I understand correctly that a student could take the course and earn the credit hours but not participate in the after-school club and engage with the competitions?
Some of our students are, struggle to attend some of the after-school practices. So this would offer them an opportunity to continue to work or do whatever they do after school and still be a part of the competition.
And the thing I would point out is that a speech class enhances language arts, and language arts is one of our, you know, core subject areas that we measure every year. So, I, I see this as a tremendous win. Thank you.
Director Livia Wright?
Just a point of clarification. Director Schmidt is correct, there is a minimum of three Saturday competitions per semester required. However, it is in the class description. This isn't a beginning speech class. This is a speech class specifically for the students interested in pursuing competitive speech and further developing that skill. And the challenge has been that students like the athletes who have sports practice after school can't also attend their speech and debate practice at the exact same time and can't continue to develop those skills. And this is a student passion. It fits into, again, offering all of those exceptional choices because students obviously are already taking their four main core classes, but they have eight periods of day to fill. This is one of the periods they could then pursue this passion as well and still be able to, and not have to choose between going to speech and debate practice and going to sports practice or play practice, or ROTC drill practice, or some of those other things that also occur out of school. And so it allows, it expands the elective opportunities, gives more students the opportunity to develop this skill set, and is something students are requesting. And as long as students know when they're signing the syllabus, they and their parents know this is a requirement. I don't think it's any different than other performance-based requirements for many of our classes, including even drama classes where they're required to be at a play after school. They're sometimes required to attend events, but also, I know even in the middle school, my children had to go to, and they were in their one quarter drama class, and there was a little play that they had to participate in, and I had to get them there on a Friday night when they were in a choir credit in middle school and in high school, same thing. So I don't think it's any different as long as students and parents are aware and it is bolded in the description of the course. So when you even select the course as an option, and I'm assuming it'll also be a part of what parents and students sign at the beginning, so that they know what's required.
You know, one thing I was thinking about when we were looking over this course, and of course I made a reference about when you're challenged to debate a, a position opposite than the one you have, where Mr. Hiltz and I watched a woman who was a horsewoman who had to take the position that it's okay to shoot and eat your horse. I got an email about that later. However, there are some cultures that do that. I personally do not consume horse meat. Debate is an integral part of a society that cherishes the First Amendment. When it comes to speech, I think about the Gettysburg Address, the March on Washington, I Have a Dream, Mr. Gorbachev, Tear Down This Wall. And so for a country that is integral, that believes in and supports the First Amendment, speech and debate, in my opinion, is a valuable exercise, especially when you are assigned to debate something opposite to your core beliefs and to get a better understanding. And I had to agree with what Director D'Vola said about losing the ability to debate civilly. And so I think it sounds great. Director Schmidt?
Again, I'm not dissing on speech and debate, okay? I agree, hundred percent, speech and debate. I wish I would have had it, okay? Again, my concern is that the grades will be affected if they do not participate. There's a number of myriad of reasons why a, a student wouldn't be able to compete on a Saturday. And I just hate to see their grades suffer if they have a job that's possibly helping the family.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, um, I'm, this is an elective course, so this isn't the only option for speech. This would be more for students who are actually very interested in that competitive piece. So I would think that would be understood with, with those students and families. And I don't know how many opportunities there are. I know it says a minimum of three, so I'm, I anticipate that there's multiple opportunities so that if a certain date didn't work out, they would have other options. And it, and it is known as they go into the course. I think it is similar to a band class where, you know, the concert is required as a part of the grade. I have a musician son and we had a lot of required evening concerts and things. I remember one time we had Eagles tickets on the same night as his high school concert. And guess, guess where we went? To the high school concert. And then we drove real fast to the Eagles, so. We saw part of it, anyway. Similar to that, it's, it's that, the culmination of what they're learning in class, it's the application of the skills, similar to any other performance. But I, I hear what you're saying. Our teachers are quite reasonable and really try to work with families if there's emergencies, things like that.
Now, Assistant Superintendent Ritz, I just have to tell you to take it easy. I'm sorry. Nikos?
I think probably just, a good way to sum it up, going back to the discussion even that we had on those two new choir courses, The Rock Up There offer exceptional choices. This would be another thing among the exceptional choices that a student in our district could make.
Anyone else? Okay, let's take a vote.
D'Vola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Thank you.
On Action Item 7.9, I don't know that as a board we have determined one of the choices. Yeah. And so what I was wondering is how you make the motion? Do you just say with a blank? Can I get a motion for Action Item 7.9?
I'm going to say the one that they recommend. Right? I move to approve the teacher repositioning model recommended by administration.
Second?
So, good evening. I'll start at the mic and if we need to bring up our Executive Director of People and Culture, Paul Anderson, or our team of our interim CFO and, and budget manager from the business office, we'll bring them up if you have further questions. But if you recall back in the fall, we gave an extensive presentation about the differences between a couple of different options. It remains our recommendation from that meeting that the board approve repositioning over a two-year cycle and that we do not honor the caps, but we do refund the caps. And what that means is we did the analysis, once we had accurate data for all the teachers and, and their experience, we determined that the difference between holding on to the caps and honoring the caps, the difference between that, which was a little less generous, and the difference in, in refunding caps and being a little bit more generous was about a hundred and five thousand dollars. You asked to see the side by side, that's what's presented to you tonight. So our recommendation, if, if you want to incorporate what I'm about to say into the motion, our recommendation is, is that the board direct administration to implement the repositioning plan over a two-year period while refunding the caps from that fall discussion.
Their recommendation is on Slide 10 of the presentation. It says revised recommendation. I go through 10. Oh, it's, you know what, because it's in two places. It's on Slide 5 and Slide 10. They put it in twice.
Director D'Vola?
Yes, so on the revised recommendation, it does say offer a one-year reposition option to teachers with 25 or more years. That's also part of the recommendation, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, how, about how many, does it have it on here? How many of those teachers we, we have?
We don't have that in this presentation. We've had it in a previous presentation. But the reason why it isn't particularly helpful to have that as an absolute number is because every single case is individualized. There are people that, that are going to want to wait another, we have people that retire with 40 years of service. For them, a 25-year number is going to be irrelevant. We have people that probably retire with 20 years of service, and for them, they would wish that we were offering this to them. So, when you're getting to retirement conversations, there's a paracalculation that we don't control. There's an individual determination that we inform, but it's up to the individual. And then there's our responsibility. So it's the most individualized employment decision that we can make.
I want to say that-
Director Schmidt?
I want to say that at one point you had it broken down, or maybe Director, Dr. Trautemberg had it broken down, and there were like, I want to say 26-ish that were over 20 years. And the main bulk of it was the first, you know, the base teachers. But I want to, that's kind of the information I'm remembering.
So we, we, excuse me, we provided some of that supplemental information later on in the chart. And so you can look at, for example, Slides 16 and 17 begin to address that, but, but based on the dollars, if you look at, uh... Yeah, I won't be able to point you to the, to the ordinal numbers of each of those segments. We do have that, you have seen that. But please remember that what was included in that chart, we included that, that information from April. We just gave you the entire background. Please remember that a lot of that data was based on self-reported education and experience. And that tend, that turned out to be overstated.
Director Schmidt?
Kind of not having to do with this, but having everything to do with this. Here's what I've become frustrated with. A lot of these things that are brought to the board tend to be written and spoken in what I call eduspeak, eduspeak. I think proposals should include layman's terms instead of educational jargon, instead of delta, just say difference. Instead of cohort, just say group. Instead of acronyms, just say what it is. Is it that much harder to say American Cancer Society than it is to say ACS? It took me forever to figure this out, with help. And now that I know what it is, I understand it, I know how I'm going to vote, but I'm just asking, these presentations that you guys give us shouldn't be in eduspeak, they should be in English. So I'm asking for respecting our time, that we don't have to first figure out what it is you're saying before we do our research on it. That's all.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so, um, when we last left this conversation, we were asking to see if we chose to refund the cap versus honor the cap and what that would do to planned raises going forward. So would it negatively impact the base if we re, if we refunded that? So in looking at this, I only see base increases here for 2%. So am I to infer from this, then, that whether we honor the cap or refund the cap will have no measurable impact on the base going forward?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Student Board, do you have any questions on this?
Too many to cover, which I guess is kind of in line with what Director Schmidt was saying. Obviously, the expectation, the expectation shouldn't be that a random high school is sitting up here should be able to understand it, but I, I don't. And I, I don't imagine that too many of my, my peers would understand everything that's going on either. So, I cannot provide too much feedback on this due to that issue.
Neither can I.
I have a question, because like I said, I think the last time, was this last presented? There was April and September? I'm trying to think of when we've had, so I can't say that my clarity is a hundred percent.
We've had two major presentations, and then we've had a follow-on, and then this is our, this is the fourth time that's been in front of the board for discussion.
And my only question is, of course, per, per pupil revenue changes annually. And my biggest question is, do you feel the two-year model is sustainable? Because I don't want to see us get back to a place which you can't predict the future of a pay freeze.
For reasons we've discussed previously, we would strongly prefer the two-year model to the one-year model or the three-year model. But we can make any of them work in the budget. We explained before, all of these decisions carry trade-offs. So if we, if we do all of the refunding in one year, then you should expect that our, our overall teacher salary schedule is going to be flat year over year. We're going to spend almost all of the available new dollars on the repositioning, which means we'll have almost no new dollars available to raise the base and raise the schedule. That's the seesaw, that's the trade-off. You can either do all the repositioning quickly, or what we are asking for is to take a two-year repositioning, and, and remember what we told you before, the repositioning task will take approximately 3% forever and ever amen. So if in a normal year, a normal year in District 49, averaged over the last 12 years, our, our raise to base has been about four and a half percent. So that means if our future looks like our past, most of that future raise will be absorbed by the repositioning that we're doing now, and our raise to the schedule will be closer to one and a half to 2%. And then we'll, we'll fall behind in terms of competition. But you already made that decision in April. So that's, we've, we've been following your direction since April. The, the only real question that you had for us was the comparison between refunding and, or honoring the caps or refunding the caps, and then whether we wanted to go one or two years.
Director Livia Wright?
Just one, Nikos, don't feel bad that it was complex to read, too, because as they said, we've seen it four times. And what's in this is a compilation of all four of those presentations shortened way down. So some of them are just slides to say, hey, remember, we showed you this before, which means we have a whole bunch of extra background from those meetings that we can pull up, but that you wouldn't have looking, pulling it up today.
Do, do I need a revised motion that specifies the two-year model?
I don't think so, because the way I worded it said their recommendation, and the only recommendation in the entire packet is the one that has those four bullets.
So is there any further discussion? Okay, can I get a vote, please?
D'Vola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that passes.
Thank you. And I really, as an afterward, I just really want to thank the team that has worked very hard on this, Mr. Anderson and his team in HR, not just Paul, but the, the team that has to calculate all of these things, certainly Heather and Spencer out of the business office, but not just Heather and Spencer, it's taken others. You know, I've poured many, many tens of hours into this project, and we appreciate your leadership in helping us narrow down to this recommendation. We really look forward now to using this decision as the basis for the budget planning that really begins as of this vote.
And we are on to discussion items, and the first one is a new course proposal, Pathways to Success. And we have Principal Sanchez Martinez.
Hello. So, Pathways for Success comes out of a need to serve our- Hello. So, Pathways for Success comes out of a need to serve our students, but in a way that's a little bit more practical than the current programming that we have. So, I'm going to talk about two different ways that we serve our students to prepare them for success, both in high school and beyond. So, there is one way where we serve all of our students in our school. It is our college and career planning, or our advisory course. That's about a half an hour every week. So, on Fridays, every single student takes this course by grade level. We have themes by year, so it starts off, 9th grade is my plan to graduate, where students are talking about what is it that they'd like to do during high school, what is it that they'd like to explore, and we talk about plans to get there. And then it goes all the way up to the 12th grade, where the theme is adulting. What is it that you need to do to be a successful adult and step out into society? So, that's everything from your employability to personal financial literacy and everything in between. But that's half an hour a week, so this is also how we meet our ICAP standards. So, this is how, when we're talking about post-secondary planning is what ICAP means. Meanwhile, we also have the AVID program, so that's Advancement via Individual Determination, is what that acronym means. And this is a program that is recognized and utilized in many school districts across our country, and I think it's even international at this point. But the, the premise of that program is similar to what we do in advisory. Because it is something that is on such a large level, in order to utilize that programming, there's also a level of oversight with it. And that makes sense to me, because they want to make sure that whoever's using that name is using it to fidelity. So, there's a substantial amount of data gathering to show that we're utilizing this program to fidelity, and there is also, of course, a dollar amount attached to it. So, every year, our school pays about $6,000 in order to use the AVID name. We also pay about $6,000 every year to train our teachers. We have four teachers right now who are teaching this, one for grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, so that they can be deemed as AVID certified. What we're noticing, though, is that within advisory, that's not enough time to provide students with the support that they need. And on the other end, with AVID, there are too many stipulations that prohibit us from serving the amount of students that we need to serve. So, we have decided to sunset AVID at our school, knowing that we need to make sure that we are serving our students and preparing them for the future. So, Pathways to Success is a proposal that we came up with from our teachers. So, here's an example of what we can do to expand our programming. Right now, at the 9th grade level, we're serving 23 9th graders. So, 23 9th graders are taking an AVID course, and it's a year-long course. So, during that course, they learn everything from note-taking, organization, how to present yourself in a professional fashion, so even like how to write an email to your teacher when you need help with your homework, or when you missed a day of class. So, there's 23 students that are benefiting from that. They also have some... Using the model that we're proposing, we could serve up to half of the 9th grade class. So, instead of 23 students, we could be serving up to half of the 9th grade class, utilizing our own resources, using our expertise that we have, and utilizing a semester-long course instead of a year-long course. So, you'll see some similarities to AVID. We're going to be taking some portions of it with the ICAP standards that our students are learning in their advisory courses and adding value to it. And so, now I'll take any questions that anyone has.
Director Schmidt?
Thanks, that was a pretty down-to-earth, um, description of it.
Thank you.
So, this is not an AVID program anymore?
No, ma'am, we would not be utilizing the AVID programming anymore.
That's good, because I don't like it. Um, so, if you can do up to half the 9th grade,
Mm-hmm.
and it's a semester thing, can you do half the 9th grade, the first semester, half the 9th grade, the second semester?
It, well, what it would be is that it would be more like a quarter of the 9th grade, first semester,
Okay.
and a quarter of the 9th grade, second semester, to add up to half.
Gotcha. Okay, what I liked about this, hey, I have something I liked, folks. Um, I like the thought of working with the 9th graders on transitioning to high school and stressing the strong academics. I love that. And I like the thought of giving students interview practice, because that's very difficult. Um, I also like the thought that the students that are there, you're teaching them that there's going to be twists and turns. Like, when we were at Liberty Trees graduation last year, the keynote speaker was talking about his son who went to college for a certain career path. Well, he could find a job in that career when he graduated. So, he went to Walmart, and he started working, and he ended up becoming a manager at the local store. Well, that led to a regional position, which led to a national position, and now he's providing for his family pretty well. So, I think it's really important that they know that there's going to be obstacles and twists and turns in life, and I think that's, that's really great. I'm not understanding quite how the IGR 2 is a separate process, so I need to talk to somebody about that.
Sure.
Um, I mean, I'm sure it's probably going to pass tonight, but I still would like to understand it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, oh, we're not, oh, there's a discussion, sorry. Um, so, getting a clear understanding of that would be very helpful for me.
Sure.
So, I would appreciate that, and then...
May I, um, expound on that?
Sure.
So, just for everyone else's situational awareness, Ms. Deb emailed me and asked a little bit about what curriculum are you using? And I said, we haven't yet determined that. We have used the AVID curriculum, but since we're moving away from that, obviously, we won't be able to utilize that any further. So, the first step that we would take is approval for the courses, and then the second step we would take is to find, if it is approved, then we would find a curriculum and go through the process that is set within board policy.
So, then my next question would be, like, the Falcon Zone has been absolutely terrific in letting me come in and sit in the math curriculum that, you know, the vendors are presenting, so that I kind of have an idea of what's going on with that. Is Sand Creek Zone going to allow board members and, um, community stakeholders to review, ask questions, and provide feedback when you get to that position, to that part of it?
Sure. So, we would follow the, the way the policy is written, so I would say, for example, I think, gosh, it was two years ago, maybe? We purchased new textbooks and materials for social studies, and we followed the board policy for approval in that process. And part of that process is public review of those materials.
Just a quick clarification, tonight, we would just move it forward. We wouldn't approve it. This is just to discuss and move it forward. And yes, I was here for the Sand Creek curriculum review, because it was here at Creekside,
Yes.
where they had all the books, and we could switch to different tables, and we could read through them and look at them. Are there any other questions on this, Nikos?
Uh, not question, more so comment. I just kind of wanted to concur with the importance of teaching this. As a student myself, I'm aware that among my peers, there's definitely a very strong desire for more coursework, which is a bit more universally relevant and applicable, rather than, of course, the importance of our core subjects. But these things will help us long-term, and, uh, the campus, uh, Pace Peckery College and Spring Studio for Academic Excellence, we have a Pathways Excellence course that we offer on our campus. And as a student who has taken that, I really did gain a lot. I know from all of my, my peers that they have gained a lot from that, and this seems to be, honestly, a more rigorous version of that, which would provide even more knowledge. And I think despite the fact that maybe some, some students would be like, ah, darn, I don't want to learn about taxes. That, they, they will thank themselves and their teachers later on that they have that knowledge.
Thank you, Nikos.
Okay, and I, by the way, just to another note, I also like the job shadowing that's in here. When it talks about that they can do job shadowing and interview skills, so...
Correct.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, can we move this forward? It looks like we have a board consensus to move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, next up, we have item 9.2, Patriot High School ACE Curriculum.
Good evening, Board, Ryan Bailey, uh, Principal at Patriot High School. Um, we have started a new CTE, or Career and Technical Education Program, um, at Patriot High School this year, and that's called ACE, Alternative Cooperative Education, um, which is different than an AEC, um, Alternative Education Campus. So, just to clarify, we are no longer an Alternative Education Campus. We've continued, we are a traditional, um, school, and this Alternative Cooperative Education CTE pathway, um, is, does exist on our campus. And, uh, historically, we haven't had a curriculum, um, and it's very similar to this, um, what, um, Ms. Sanchez Martinez was describing. Um, it's just a Career and Technical Education pathway. And so, it's four courses. Um, course one, when students come in, they're learning about the school. Um, they're learning Effective Groups, Anger Management, Effective Communication, Assertiveness, Problem Solving, and Conflict Resolution. And then, and they, as they go on, in the second course, they're starting to learn more about themselves. So, Self-Discovery, Goal Vision Setting, Empathy, Professionalism, Decision-Making, Critical Thinking. Course three in this, uh, four-course sequence is Career Development, and that's when they're, um, learning how to ask for references, write resumes, conduct interviews, um, financial literacy, budgeting, all of those things. And then the fourth, fourth course in the sequence is an internship, and so we have a couple opportunities for students. They can do school-based internships. So, we have an embroidery shop on campus, we have a Bison Bite Student Store, so, um, students can, can have a soft start into those internships, or they can go out into the community and do those internships in the community. And so, that would be the four-course sequence for this alternative, uh, for ACE. We have used a variety of curricula to support this historically, and we have found one that we're pretty excited about. And so, that is the Dreamworks, I can't remember the exact name. The curriculum that's on the, the board there. Um, and, and that curriculum was found and used, um, Dream Builders, sorry, there you go, found it. It's a, it's a cool company that designs curriculum based upon your needs. And so, this curriculum was designed specifically for a, a similar course sequence that takes place, um, in Hawaii. And so, it's used by the entire Department of Education in Hawaii, and we felt like it was an appropriate, um, fit for what we're looking for. So, that curriculum specifically, uh, covers a lot of those skills, and what's nice about it is we would use it as a resource, um, as a supplemental curricula for the spring, to be able to identify which units are most important, and what order and how those align to our sequencing. And then the company will actually design the, the, the coursebooks and the workbooks based upon what we need. And so, we would end up with a curriculum that is specific and specifically designed for our students, and we get to design the cover, which students would do, so they're pretty excited about that, um, if this is approved. So, um, we're just looking to, um, get this curricula approved, and, um, I'll take any questions you have.
Director Schmidt?
It's always me. Um, so, there aren't any other curricula that you're looking at. You're just looking at the Dream Builders, and it is a supplemental?
It's supplemental, yes.
Okay. Um, I do appreciate that you did send me the curriculum. I haven't looked at it a whole lot yet. It was Christmas, and, um, it'll be nice to look at it a little bit more before we vote on it. If I have any questions, can I buzz on over and?
Absolutely.
And ask them?
Yep, and we have, um, a sample workbook. We have one physical copy of each of the workbooks, um, and there are three different courses that exist.
Okay.
Um, but that is something that our, our teacher is looking through very heavily, um, and so we just want to, um, we'd be happy to share it with you.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? Do I have a consensus to move this forward, then? It looks pretty unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Next, we have our Zone Reports.
All right, good evening. Before we start the time, um, could I have a few minutes just to explain a couple changes, um, that we took on this year? That all Zones did in the reports, just to give some background context?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, I, we just wanted to highlight, because it'll look a little different from last year, um, just to give you guys some context as we go through to help explain what all of the slides show. So, um, Brian Smith, Falcon Zone Superintendent, um, and I'm here with my colleagues, the other Zone Superintendents, to do our Zone Performance Reports this evening, and I will say, this is an incredible team. Um, I really enjoy working with the three of these individuals. Um, we are really focused on the district's mission and vision and the big rocks, and having one district operate together, in the past, different Zones have done a lot of different things. And I will say, the four of us are really trying to bring things in strong alignment and work really well together. So, kudos to my colleagues sitting back there. I really enjoy working with them, and, uh, all of us are trying to raise the bar. We want to raise the level of expectation, and you'll see that, um, in our presentations tonight. We met, uh, back at the beginning of the year, uh, with the Performance Excellence Team, uh, to talk about how we could make these reports better. Um, and so, huge kudos also to Logan Bliss. Uh, he did a lot of work putting these slides together for us, um, so we wanted to make sure to give him some kudos. As we go through, you will see, last year, if you remember, we had to give you a key, and then we had all these numbers, and you had to compare. We wanted to get everything on the slides for you, so you'll see the color bands are there. So, where our marks are, it's already in the color band, so you don't have to correlate back or understand any of that. So, that was one big change we wanted to make based on your feedback last year. Um, we did recognize, Director D'Vola, I remember last year you wanted to know the participation rates, and as soon as we submitted our presentations, we realized we forgot to put them on the slides, but we have the information for you, and we'll, we'll share that as we go through. So, we do have that for you this year. We wanted to make sure the KPIs align to the BHAGs that the district has in place. If you remember previously, we just reported on Star Literacy, Star Math, and Customer Satisfaction. We still have that, but we felt because the district has a BHAG related to a distinction with diversity, we needed to have a KPI aligned to that, since the district is working to become accredited with distinction. So, one of our KPIs actually has that as a major focus related to our SPF's, so that we can look at how we're improving with that. So, that'll be the first one we talk about. Um, then, we'll get into our STAR data, so we still have literacy, we still have math, um, and we now have early literacy, so you'll be able to see kindergarten first, uh, as part of that KPI as well, when we look at, um, early literacy. Last year, growth was basically telling you from the year before to this year, what was the percentage change. And Director D'Vola, we remembered you wanted to talk more about growth percentiles and the median growth percentile. Um, and so, we included that information this year, um, so that you can see how that growth, um, spells out. A growth percentile, basically, um, we are, the 50th percentile means you're growing at the same rate as like populations, like schools across the state of Colorado. So, when we talk about growth, 50th percentile means you have similar growth. We're pushing for higher, we want to see it higher than 50. If it's below 50, that means we weren't growing as fast. So, when we talk about growth this year, we'll be talking about growth percentiles instead of just a percent change. So, that was one change we made as well. Um, so, that's kind of how the reports will work as we go through. Are there any questions on the format or anything of that nature?
I just had a quick comment. One thing you, that I see that you changed is, last year, each of the reports was in a different format. So, it was hard to do, if I recall correctly, the side-by-side, or was that the year before? Okay, so...
We changed that last year.
Okay. So, anyway, thank you for the presentation, just so we could know, but I do remember when they were all different.
Yes.
And so, this is a lot easier to read.
Yeah.
Director D'Vola?
Uh, I do appreciate the percentiles. That's going to help my brain significantly. Thank you.
Okay, you ready?
We'll jump in.
Okay.
Was there anything I missed? Was that, okay, all right. As we go through this, you'll see the bottom, there's that grid. That is what is going to fill as we go to show you what our score was. Remember, there's a 4, 3, 2, 1. Four means you're exceeding, three means you're meets, two means you're approaching, one means needs improvement. So, you'll see that fill as we go. Um, that's why that's at the bottom as we progress through each slide. So, I'm going to talk about Falcon Zone, obviously, um, and how we are doing. So, on the first KPI, in terms of the district performance framework, this is the one, uh, matching towards, uh, Distinction with Diversity. Falcon Zone last year was at a percentage of 57.5. This year, we moved to a 62.6. This year, we moved to a 62.6. So that is a gain for both achievement and growth, when you look at the school performance framework. If you look at all six schools in the Falcon Zone, you will see five of the six all gained and moved up. We had one, Woodman Hills, that reached accredited with distinction, so we were very excited about that. But every school showed a demonstration of increase on their SPF, with the exception of one. Meridian Ranch showed a decrease, and it was interesting. Their achievement scores were relatively high. And when you hit that relatively high achievement range, it's harder to grow. And what we found was, their achievement was so high, they, we did not focus in on growth as well. And our students did not reach that 50th percentile of growth, and growth is weighted higher on the SPF. And so Meridian actually saw a decline. We challenged this with the state. We filed a request to reconsider, where you can provide additional data. And we won that challenge. And so Meridian actually moved out of improvement to performance, because we were granted that request to reconsider, because we showed STAR data that shows our students are growing and achieving. So that was super exciting. Falcon Middle, you will see, is at 52.8, huge gain. 53.0 is where they reached meets, so we were .2 away. When we dove into that data, we found out one student moving one scale score point would have moved them out of improvement into performance. So we were that close. The middle school is harder, you can't supplement, you can't, there's no additional data to provide, because you can't challenge the data that's there. We tried, but we were not successful in that one. But when I share with you our STAR data here in a second, you will see Falcon Middle is well on its way to being out of improvement this next year. So we were very excited about that. So based on our being 62.6, we meet this KPI. In terms of our STAR assessment, middle of the year, what you can see is our percentage of students that were proficient and above. On this graph, it shows Falcon Zone was 38% this year, remaining 38% this year. We did find out there's an error. I found this after slides had to be submitted. Our kindergarten data was included in that 38% last year, and it was not included this year. And when I factored it in, that number should actually be at 42%, so it should have shown a gain, moving into the green. But it's still not high enough for us. We still need to focus there, and I'll talk about what we're doing. The growth is a little concerning, because we dipped. We're below that 50th percentile, so we're not growing as fast as like schools, as I talked about before. So we are approaching in terms of math growth. We have to focus in on math in the Falcon Zone. It is not where we want to be. When we looked at our scores for each school on STAR from beginning to middle, I'm sorry, last year middle to this year middle, we had it all over the place. We had some decreasing, we had some increasing. But I will tell you, Falcon Middle School showed a 6% gain from middle of last year to middle of this year. They were the highest gainer in the zone. Again, working towards moving out of improvement, so we were happy about that. But we have work to do in math, and I'm gonna talk about that when I get to one of the later slides. In terms of reading, you will see that we were, again, stable there, 50% from middle last year to middle of this year. I will tell you, every school in the Zone, with the exception of one, showed increases in their reading achievement scores this year on STAR. We had one show a significant decline. It was Falcon High School. There was actually a 7% decrease from middle last year to middle this year. That's why my principal is still sitting here, because he is fired up about this. We have some work we have to do, and he knows what it is, and I'll talk to you about what we're doing there. If the high school had not been factored in that number, we would have been close to the 60% mark for Falcon Zone, because every school showed gains. Falcon Middle School showed an 8% increase in reading. So again, on their way to not being on improvement. Our growth percentile is above the 50th. So again, in this area, though, we are growing faster than like populations in the state, which is good. All of the schools had pretty high, Falcon High, again, was the one area we need to focus in on there. And we know what we need to do. Early literacy, wow. Kindergarten first grade, we are in the blue, exceeding, especially from moving 69% up to 76%. So we're doing some great work there in kindergarten and first. But when you hit those high achievement ratings, it's harder to grow. And so we have to really target in and make sure that we are really looking at kid-by-kid kindergarten first, because our growth percentile decreased a little bit. And so that's an area we need to focus on for that KPI, because we're only approaching there as well. In terms of customer satisfaction, overall, you will see, from the VOW Voice of the Workforce Survey, Falcon Zone had its highest score ever in terms of overall satisfaction. We moved to 8.0. Last year, this one was 7.9, which kept us green. This year, we moved blue, because we moved to that 8.0. So we were excited about that. From the Culture and Climate Survey, looking at the questions related to, would you recommend your school? Do you like your school? The student data shows that we're meeting in each of those KPIs. The parent one, though, shifted to approaching. And we have some work to do to connect in there. You're gonna hear about a campaign we are launching specifically for that right now, that my community liaison is focused on. You're really gonna see it when we host the Zone feature at the board meeting next week, because we have a whole bunch of things in place with it. But that's an area we know we need to focus on to better serve our parents and our community, because we, we decreased in that score. However, I will say, we only had 102 responses from parents out of the 3,800 students we have in the Zone. So, yeah, we've gotta work on getting some better response there. Yeah, we were a little boggled by that. So, when you look at the meets versus exceeding, you will see all of the scores and all those different areas that I highlighted. You average those out, just like on a GPA scale. And then each of those KPIs is weighted 33% each. And so that means overall, right now Falcon Zone is meeting. I say that in a way, because we're not done. We have work to do, we're not happy with where we're at, especially, we want to continue to raise achievement. We are seeing it in a majority of our schools. We are building momentum, but we're not done. We have work we still need to do. We have launched this year our new Portrait of a Graduate. We are really making sure everyone in the Falcon Zone focuses on earning their wings. You're gonna hear more about this at our Zone feature next month, so I'm not gonna take too much time right now, because we'll spend a lot more next month. But everyone, staff, students, are focusing on wisdom, integrity, networking grit, and self-confidence. And we talk about wisdom, that's the academic piece, that's why we have that one first. We want to make sure we're growing in our academics. Math, as you saw with our data, we have work to do. And we have found, much similar to when I talked to you about our curriculum adoptions last year, we have math all over the place. We have different schools using different things. We don't have a common language happening K-12 that is causing some issues across the system. And so we have been in the middle of our math curriculum adoption. Director Schmidt, as you mentioned, you've been there, participating in that piece. But to get a better curriculum in place that is rigorous, to make sure our students are learning key math skills, that also builds up to the high school. The high school, as you saw, was our challenge with ELA. And I will tell you their curriculum right now. The books that are in that room, when I was a high school student in the state of Arizona, those were the books I was using. Classic literature is the same, but the teachers are trying to supplement with a lot of different resources. And when we started this year, they were like, we need help. We're trying to pull, we're trying to meet these standards, we don't have the right tools, and our data is showing that. And so to help with our ELA performance at the high school, we're in the middle of an adoption right now. We're finding good results from my colleagues and talking to them in the Sand Creek Zone and Power Zone, and we're likely gonna align with what they have, again, to bring the district together in that piece. With our integrity piece, we have a huge instructional evaluation focus in the Zone right now. If we're going to grow our achievement, we gotta empower our teachers. We gotta help make sure our teachers have what they have, and push them to higher levels of performance. We have rock star teachers, and they all want to grow. They all want to know what they need to do. So we're norming as administrators to make sure we're all looking at that the same way, making sure we're aligned in how we give teachers feedback, and how we help coach them. We launched a new self-reflection process this year to help teachers reflect with where they are, so that their instructional coaches can help them out with that process. And we're using our Teacher Evaluation Council, a group of teachers to really look at the evaluation process and talk about how we can grow that overall. With networking, almost there, I almost made it. Okay, yeah.
Real quick, I know you've gotta go through your supplemental information?
No.
You don't? Okay. If you need a little bit longer, that's fine.
Okay, thanks. In terms of networking, we just did a Falcon Zone Ed Camp to launch this semester. We had expert teachers sharing strategies, showing people what's working in their classrooms. Teachers got to choose which sessions they wanted to go to, to improve their instructional practices, and learn from colleagues, learn from experts that are doing great things. Our survey was awesome. They want to do it again. They want, other teachers now want to help share best practices and great strategies, so that we can help grow each other. And so that was very effective, and we'll plan that again in the future. The Fall in Love with Falcon campaign is what you're gonna learn about next month, but that's to better connect with our community and better address some of those community concerns and just relationships that are out there. My community liaison is diving straight in on that one. And we've got some things already in the works on social media and surveying our community, so that we can strengthen that KPI. So you're gonna learn more about that next month. In terms of grit, we had 13 national finalists this year for Modern Learning Conference Awards. And it's the first time we have a finalist from every building in the Zone, at the national level, as well as the Zone level. So we are super excited about all of those national finalists. And self-confidence, we launched a new learner profile tool this year. My academic administrator, Tim Scheck, created, aligned with the Ria sec and true colors, to help students be able to say what their learning styles are, how they learn best. They take a survey, teachers have the data, so they can look at it and know what types of things they can do in their classrooms to best help their students learn and to best meet their individual needs. This has been a game changer, and we're starting to see teachers really interact better with their students to see what they need to learn better and make those adjustments in their classrooms to best support students. So that is the overview of a lot of things we were working on in the Falcon Zone, and I'll entertain any questions.
Now, I think I saw both, Director Heil, did you raise your hand too? Director Heil? You wanna go, Director? Yeah.
So I wanted to circle back to the conversation at the very beginning, where you were talking about your peers behind you, and you are a team, and you are working together. And I think that is outstanding and absolutely the, the right attitude to have. And so I would just like to let the, the, the community know that as you're going through these things, we are not trying to make this into any kind of a competition. That this, each one of the, our district, or our Zones, they are unique, they're serving different populations, they, they have different kinds of challenges. And so we really want to just check in with you guys, let's see how things are going, what we can do to support you, and in order to drive great outcomes for all of you.
And I'll just add to that, we, this team I, I enjoy working with, we push each other. And we're at, what did you do? Oh, what are you guys doing? Like, we all try and steal different things from each other, so we can push each other.
Yeah, and that brings to mind exactly the right analogy, comes from NASCAR. So when they're doing the, the superspeedways, and they're matting the, the gas through the entire thing, the only way to make any progress through the pack is what one of the announcers likes to call "cooperation." So they get, they get lined up with each other, they push each other, and they all make each other better in order to get to the front.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know originally with the, with the Zone model, it was for competition and cooperation, sharing highest and best practices. And now I guess I've just learned that Director Heil likes NASCAR. Director Schmidt? Wow, five of the six schools improved. Go Woodman Hills, very encouraging from the Zone. I think the math curriculum's probably gonna help you out on your math. So I'm really glad that we're in the middle of that. In the report, I see the STAR assessment numbers for all of this stuff, but I'm not seeing any CMAS numbers for comparison. Is that necessary, or would that be helpful?
I will tell you, STAR is an indicator towards CMAS, but we are finding it's not direct correlation. In some places, last year's data, where we thought it was a better correlation, we found our data did very strange things. In some places, it was higher than what we projected, which was cool. And in secondary, it actually was a little bit lower. And so we're still trying to figure out that exact correlation to CMAS, so that's why the CMAS scores weren't on there.
And then you mentioned, you have some classic literature. How much of that do you have? That's very interesting. I'm, I'm a real proponent of classic literature.
Yeah, our, our English Language Arts curriculum at the high school, to follow the state's standards, they, every year, English 1, 2, 3, and 4 have different pieces of classic literature embedded. Shakespeare, all, all those pieces to make sure they learn those specific standards of the English Language Arts.
Director D'Vola?
Yeah, I have, I have three things. One thing that I noted, which I thought was really good, was that secondary students had a 7.5 for the satisf, overall satisfaction, which actually was slightly higher from the elementary, which is a phenomenon that usually does not happen. And so, kudos to your secondary staff, and just really connecting with those kids. I think that's awesome. And then, in relation to you guys pushing each other, helping each Zone communicating, that, that was our, our goal. I know the, the previous board, at least, we, we really wanted you guys to be able to share best practices, and John would go over that over and over again, of sharing best practices, what's working, what's not working, what are you doing that I can do? So you guys are meeting that goal, which is pretty awesome. And then the last one is to touch base on the CMAS versus the STAR, and the rationale for why CMAS wouldn't be on here necessarily. So CMAS data was from the previous year, and it's, it would be a lot, it would, it's better at the end or the beginning of the next year to look at the last year's STAR data with the CMAS data. And this is this year's data. So that would be coming next fall of where we would compare the two. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I will share with that, so Tim Scheck, my academic administrator, he builds spreadsheets for my, all my teams. And on those spreadsheets, we actually do list their CMAS scores, their STAR scores, beginning, middle, and end, so that we can see that full picture of our students.
Yes, and that's the, that's the best way to have it.
Absolutely. And I forgot, Director D'Vola, on our STAR, we did have 97% participation rate. I forgot to tell you that.
And I forgot to ask, so.
Student Board, do you have any questions about the first report you'll be here for? Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for sharing your data.
And I will introduce Teresa.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. So I'm excited, the pressure's off, because Brian already lost the bet. He went overtime. So no pressure, it's all good now. All right. Good evening, I'm excited to be here tonight to share our Power Zone progress with you. Our educators and students are certainly working hard, and it's nice to be able to talk about some of that tonight. So this is the District Performance Framework. So I just wanted to point out that this is where our CMAS data is taken into consideration, because that's a big part of how we get these scores. But you'll see on the left, our Zone Performance Framework score for two years. So you can see the increase there for the Power Zone. And then you'll see all six of our schools. And very pleased to report that all of our campuses increased, which is a great celebration. Our largest increases were at Odyssey with 8.2 points, and then Skyview with 11.2 points, which led them to distinction level. So that's, it's a great celebration. For this KPI, that brought us to a score of 3 in the meeting range, and we are excited to keep aiming for that 74 to be a Zone of Distinction. Moving into the next component of our KPI STAR assessment, the first part here is math. You see math achievement on the left, math growth on the right. I want to just give a shout-out first to, really, our entire district. All of the Zone Superintendents have worked really hard to create a culture of accountability, and our, our testing percentages are showing that. So in the Power Zone specifically, we had 94% and above test participation with with everything tested, even at our high school, which is quite an accomplishment. Some of these kids don't even come to our campus because they're taking Concur and enrollment and whatnot, we have to really chase them down. And so as a district, I'm really proud that we're increasing that accountability. We are up from last year in both achievement and growth. We are in the yellow band at growth, we missed green by one point there. Our achievement across the last couple of years is notable in the increase, so we're pleased to see that. If you were to look at our supplemental slides, which we would encourage you to do, you would see that Ridge View Elementary is leading for us in both achievement and growth in math. And Vista Ridge High School is showing some really solid scores right now this year, and we're really pleased with that. They're in their second year, we're in our second year of a secondary math curriculum implementation, and we're starting to see the payoff from that. So we're very proud of the progress that's being made there. We've been doing a lot of work as a district in math, working closely with Learning Services, with the DNA Initiative, and also in the Power Zone, we have Curtis Turner, our math specialist, and Kim Kressler, our Zone Instructional Coach, and they've been working alongside building coaches to prioritize standards, pace curriculum, work on our assessments, most recently just working on really solid lesson planning. So we're pleased with our trajectory, but we know that the best is yet to come for us in our math data. Moving on to reading, again, achievement and growth, we are up in both again this year, landing us in the green band for both. You can see the increase in achievement across the last couple of years. When you look at this broken down by school, we're really encouraged by our growth in reading because every school is at fifty or higher, which is what we're looking for. Odyssey Elementary is leading reading growth right now at middle of the year for, on STAR for our zone and actually for the district. So Odyssey has the, the best growth in the district right now, and Allies actually has the second best growth in our zone and in our district. So those are some celebrations. And again, we're encouraged by Vista Ridge's growth, they're in the first year of an ELA curriculum implementation, which sometimes shows us a dip in data, and so we're really excited that we're not seeing that right now. And we're doing some great things there. We, we use something called Seven Steps to a Language-Rich Interactive Classroom, that increases academic language, reading, writing, speaking across all content areas, and we do believe that is helping us tremendously with, with reading and with everything, really. And we're about to take our next steps in that with something called Talk Read Talk Write, which is step six and seven at a deeper level, so excited about that. The last piece of STAR here is early literacy. We are up slightly in achievement but down two points in growth, putting us at green for achievement and in the yellow band for growth. So this is the data that we're most concerned about, we're taking a close look at this in correlation with DIBELS. And we're, we're working to identify if there are instructional gaps, we know we have some testing practices that we probably need to improve with our, our little people, so we're working on some things there. But I do want to affirm Inspiration View, if you look at our supplemental data, they are leading the way in our zone in both achievement and growth in STAR Early Literacy. Customer Satisfaction, this is a big deal to us in the Power Zone, it's a big deal in District Forty-nine, and in the Power Zone, we kind of hang our hat on relationships we have since the beginning. We care about the experience of our workforce, we know that that shapes the experience for our students, so we're, we're very attentive to that. We are trending upward, I'm on the wrong page of my notes here. We are at an eight point one overall, and you can see the trend across the last few years, so we're really pleased with that score, that's exceeding. And when you look at this broken down by school, all of our schools are doing quite well in this KPI. Allies continues to lead in this indicator, and that's really incredible because we have a new principal, Amy Zweifel, and that's not easy to step into the shoes of Rebecca Thompson, and she's done such an amazing job, and the staff there has done an amazing job of this transition, so we're very excited about that. And then I mentioned at the showcase that Skyview Middle School earned second place in the Best Workplace, which is a part of this piece too as well. Yes, very cool. The next component of customer satisfaction is Culture Climate Survey, and the Net Promoter Score is what we look at. And there's an error on this one, our parents, it's an error in the right direction for us though, so that's good. Parents should be blue, we actually hit exceeding with parent satisfaction, and it shows as green. With our elementary students, we are green, and with our secondary students, we are actually in the yellow band. So we're working really hard on school spirit and culture with our secondary students. We've been inspired over the years by our Sand Creek Zone experts in Josten's Renaissance. And so we've taken that on at our secondary schools and we're doing some great things there, and the spirit definitely is increasing, and that's going to help us with that score. I want to point out that the most satisfied parents in District Forty-nine, according to this measure anyway, are at Ridge View and Allies. So that's a huge celebration for us, the parent communication is strong, the engagement and involvement is strong. And then your most satisfied students, which is very profound, are your Allies Dragons. And when you think about that, students who have struggled traditionally and now they are the most satisfied in District Forty-nine on this measure, that's, that's a real celebration for us. So that takes us to our aggregate of a three, which is meeting. And I just want to remind you on this last slide, that in the Power Zone, this is how we organize our work. It's around the High Reliability Schools Framework by Marzano. If you look at that QR code in the top corner, that takes you to a site called choosepowerzone.com, we've been working very hard on that to try to bring in some choice students. And that site is showcasing all that we have to offer, so I would encourage you to check that out. But we, we organize our work into these HRS levels. HRS Level One is a safe, supportive, collaborative culture. HRS Level Two is effective teaching in every classroom, and HRS Level Three is a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so you can see all of our initiatives in the category that they fall into. I put in blue font the ones that we're giving the most energy to right now, we've been, we work on all of these all the time, but in the, in the blue font, that's been our priority for this school year. And then you see around the perimeter there, you see our power priorities, people first, opportunities, those are the pieces that we filter all of our work through. So we're, we're really excited about the work we're doing, I, I have an amazing principal team, we have incredible instructional coaches, and I'm just really grateful, our teachers are second to none, they're just such hardworking people, we're, I'm very grateful for all that they do. We're, we're not where we want to be yet, but we're on the right trajectory, and that feels pretty good. So, thank you. If you have questions, I would be glad to answer. Oh, I do want to just reiterate, I announced it at showcase, but with HRS levels, we do have Ives that just achieved HRS Level One certification, so Principal Pam Holloman will get to walk across the stage in San Antonio in about a week at the HRS Summit to receive that award. And Dr. De Felice at Ridge View led the staff to be our first school to certify in HRS Level Three. By twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, all of our schools will be certified in levels one through three. Thank you. What questions?
Director Devola?
Yes, question on the climate and culture survey, or culture and climate survey. How many parents did you have respond? Because I know that Brian was talking about hundreds versus, how many did you have?
We had quite a few, I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get it to you, but we had a lot more than, than that. We had a, a pretty solid response.
And then going back to collaborative competition.
Yes.
You guys can, can glean from each other, what are you doing for your secondary students to get that score higher?
Exactly.
What are you doing with your parents to get them more engaged?
Right.
And so that just right there shows that you guys have different strengths that you can bring to the table.
Yes, I would agree with everything that Brian said, we're, we work very closely together. It takes a village to take care of Dustin, so it really requires team effort. We have a lot of fun, it's, it's a good group, it's a good group.
Director Schmidt?
I'm just really encouraged by these numbers, I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you, thank you. We're encouraged by it too, you know, when, it's, it's hard because teachers work so hard and they get this new curriculum, and sometimes you don't see the data right away and they can get very discouraged, but we're starting to see the payoff, and that feels really great to the teachers who are there doing that hard work with the students every day.
Student Board, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just comment as well on the figures that you showed for Allies, because I definitely think that's really great. Because not just through the performance of the school itself, but the satisfaction of the people in it, I think those are definitely both of equal, equal performance to the fact that district-wide Allies is the high school with the high scores, I think that's just amazing.
Thank you. We do too, it's so notable that students who come to that school really almost afraid of school end up being the most satisfied students in, in the district, and that just says so much about the staff and the leadership and the parents and the collaboration there. It's, it's a really special place.
Director Heil?
So a year ago, when you presented to us, we were, you and I talked about how your zone was right on the cusp of going into the green, and I was looking forward to congratulating you.
I remember.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And just to emphasize how each one of these zones is different and therefore they shouldn't be graded against each other, the fact that you have an Allies on your books is going to influence your scores in ways that the, the other districts or the other zones are just not facing, right? So we're going to have, you know, an entire school worth of high-impact students, and so that's going to bring down achievement.
Right.
But also it has a huge outsized impact on satisfaction because the students, as you said, love it, the parents absolutely love it.
Yes.
And so it's just a, a very different zone with very different challenges. So one of the questions I had then, in thinking about this, is I'm looking at your growth percentiles, and I'm thinking about, that is supposed to be normed against a similar population? Given that you have Allies, does that, is that being taken into account when you calculate that?
So, so the students would be compared to other students who score similar to them. So at the beginning of the year when they test, depending on where they test, then they're compared to similar scoring students. They may not all have dyslexia, but they are compared to similar scoring students.
Okay, so it's more on the granular student level rather than like a school population level?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And just a quick comment, and I hope they do it again, one of the greatest adventures I've had throughout all of this was when Principal Thompson hosted Understanding Dyslexia.
Yes.
And even having a dyslexic student that night was such an eye-opener, and so I hope they decide to do that again, and if so, I'm really encouraged by fellow board members to attend that. Director Laverre, right, I don't know if you ever went to that, but that was, it was a very eye-opening experience to go through that.
Are you talking about the experienced dyslexia night?
Yeah, experiencing dyslexia, that's right, okay, yes.
Yeah, they did do that earlier this year, they may have another one coming up. It usually happens a couple of times per year, and actually, we're in process of planning one of those for our high school staff. So we're really working to expand the knowledge of dyslexia support into our secondary schools more and potentially even expand the, the programming and the language therapy when we can.
If you do that again, I would really appreciate it if you would invite members of the Board who are able to attend because that was, that was absolutely wonderful.
I'd be glad to.
Are there any other questions or comments, Megan? Nothing? All right, thank you. And you ran over to Teresa, so Brian gets to sit out as well.
But Brian lost first, so.
Next, we have the poster child, I mean Superintendent Horace.
Yep, that's me. I, oh, of course she did. I do want to point out, Teresa didn't finish on time. I don't think I'll have that problem. All right, Dustin Horace, Sand Creek Zone Superintendent. What we're looking at here is the, the district performance framework. As an overall Zone, we, we did dip a little bit from a year ago, but when you look on the right, we had all four of our elementary schools increased in points, we had two schools scoring at distinction level, two of our elementaries. The, and a couple of cool things about that is Stetson Elementary, a twenty-five point increase in one year, it's pretty cool. The other thing that I want to, you can't see it on here, but Remington, so Remington's a school that, that is, that has been able to consistently perform pretty well. This is the year they are in distinction level, but I looked back several years and they have scored above seventy points on the SPF since twenty seventeen. And I don't, I don't, I didn't look at every school, I, I know our Zone schools, but I don't believe there's any school that has done that, that consistent performance at that high of a level. That's one of the reasons that, that Remington received the recognition they did today from the state, but Remington, Remington's is consistently up there, which is nice. The other, I didn't mention to start, so just to remind, five of our six schools in the Sand Creek Zone are also Title I schools, so, which is something I think we all enjoy, honestly, working with, with that population. STAR data for math, so overall, this performance is, is, is stable, achievement and, and growth over the past two years. Each of it, each of our elementaries in achievement increased between five and twelve percent, depending on the elementary. Two of our schools were at twelve, I think we had a nine and a five. A couple of things to be proud of, as far as growth, when you, when you look at growth, we had three of the top four schools in, in the district in growth. And, and the, one of the things I'm, I'm the most proud of is the highest growing school in, in math in, was Evans. So, and, and if you know, if you don't know, Evans is, this year Odyssey surpassed them in the, the free and reduced percentage, I think they have sixty-four and Evans is at sixty-three, but traditionally been a, a lower, the, one of the lower socioeconomic schools in the district. And on the last slide, Evans was on improvement for the last couple of years, so they moved up to performance this year as well. So it's, it's cool that they... And then as far as on the achievement side, when you, when you compare achievement, I believe PPEC was number one, that's a, that's a little different school than the next three scoring schools after PPEC were our elementary, three of our elementaries, so on math. So good, some good things in elementary math we have going on in the Zone. Reading, again, pretty stable and consistent year over year. Some highlights there is, is Springs Ranch was, was over sixty percent proficient in reading, and then we had a couple of schools, Stetson and Evans both, both had a nine and a seven percent increase in their reading achievement, so that's pretty good. Early literacy, some good things here as well. Three, three of the schools were, were in the top four of growth in the district. We had, and then two of them, Stetson and Springs Ranch, were both over seventy-two percent achievement on that. And then we had, well, three of our schools had a twenty percent increase from beginning of, from beginning to middle of the year, so pretty good there. And then, then achievement-wise, we're at, well, in both of them actually, over the four-year period, we're, we're at the, we're at the, the best we've been in four years, so that's good. The Vow results, so some pretty, a pretty nice score there, so, oops. So, oops, over six years, you can see that our zone, this is our 8.5 was the highest score that our zone has had over that time. And that's really due to, I mean, I told Teresa what I was going to say is that I was cooler than she is. But really, it has nothing to do with me at all. It has to do with we have good leadership in our buildings and they're trusted. And we talk about this stuff a lot. Renaissance, you guys have all heard about that. Renaissance isn't just for recognizing and rewarding students, but it's, there's a big staff piece to that as well. So that's a pretty nice thing. Our customer satisfaction, our culture and climate scores here, you can see where we are. Our secondary is a little lower. I mean, that's been fairly typical, I think, compared to elementary. Our parents, that's a pretty nice score, honestly. For our parents, what I want, and I'm actually going to jump ahead real quick to slide 14 because this is in the supplemental, but I want to point this out because it goes, it ties to those two we just looked at. The employee is at the bottom and the family is at the top. So Studer is surveys that our zone has worked with. Studer Education, we've worked with for several years since 2018. And these are surveys we give every year and we have since 2018. So we give an employee, a family, and a student. We started the student one this week. So we don't have those results because we do it after Christmas. But you can see where our mean has been. And the thing I want to point out the most is that solid green line on each of those, that is the national mean for Studer. So this is compared to a national. So depending on the survey, that could be employees is about 35,000 responses nationally and the family one's over 90,000 responses. So that, so to be over the national mean is pretty good. Studer tells us that scoring four overall or on individual items is exceptional. So again, that's pretty nice to see that data. Let me get back to where I was. All right. So then this is just our zone overall data. And you can see we were approaching in a couple areas exceeds in four. It's always nice to be exceeds more than you are in approaching and then meets on some others. Zone-wide, so we focus on culture, instruction, success. That's what our instructional framework is based on. We have, culture-wise, we have, all six of our schools this year are implementing Johnston's Renaissance. They've all sent people to the conference. They're all sending people to the conference again this summer. All pretty excited about what they're seeing with that. We had two schools that received distinction awards. Sorry, I mean, three schools that received platinum-level distinction. That's the highest level. Horizon has received it every year they've given it. So I think they're the only school really in the nation that has done that. That's four years in a row now. And then, so what, they have a silver and a gold and a platinum level. And I believe each of our schools, all six of our schools will at least get to the silver level for this next year that we'll receive in the summer. So, which is good. Instruction, we are, we have several pathways that we're proud of that we offer at Sand Creek. The newest one, Criminal Justice, started last year. But all of them are pretty popular and well-attended. Curriculum-wise, this year at the elementary level, we're implementing a writing-with-design structure. And that is not a curriculum, it's a structure. So it's designed to work with whatever curriculum across contents that you're working. So we've had some extensive training. All of our teachers have attended six half-days of training. Well, they haven't yet, they are. Our third, our first through, our second through fifth grades are having training tomorrow. So two grades in the morning, afternoon is our next one. And then with that, there's some modeling that the coach comes in. We're also planning to implement that at the secondary level next year. Math DNA has been one of the big keys in elementary for us. And then this year, our secondary level started with the new grant. So all of our secondary teachers are participating in that training at Horizon and Sand Creek. The success, Peter talked about the ESCA School of Distinction for Remington that they received today with the $10,000 check and that was pretty cool. And then we have the two distinction schools on the SPF. At Sand Creek, we offer several certifications that are very popular. Phlembotomy is probably the most popular. And then Fusion 360, last year there were 96 students that received that. So we, and then this year will be the first year that we have a couple of students do the personal training certification. Concurrent enrollment, highest enrollment in concurrent enrollment classes in the region. So 221 students in the fall. That number is very similar this year. Then 18 courses are offered at Sand Creek, which is the most, again, in the region. I'm done.
You won the bet.
You couldn't have timed that any better. And once again, I know, did you want to say anything else about Remington? Because I know, like I said, there was two schools in the state.
Right.
To achieve this.
Yeah, so ESCA, two schools in the state that receive recognition from ESCA. So coming up in February, ESCA is essentially the Title I conference. So we will, we have representatives from every school. This year, it's really assistant principals from our Title I schools are going. I will go with them. And then we also added Cassie. So both of them from Remington are going because of this award. So there will be a time they get to go up on stage at this conference. And this is a pretty, very large conference because it's all Title I in the nation. So they'll be recognized there. There's some other events. I got an email yesterday about a launch to go to for schools that receive that. So yes, only two in the state that get that. District 49's never had one, to my knowledge, that's received this recognition. So they were pretty excited.
Do we have any questions for the Sand Creek Zone? No? Oh, wait, Director Heil?
Just wanted to congratulate you for draining the buzzer beater. Swish! I'm full of sports analogies tonight. So again, I wanted to touch on that theme of how each one of these zones are very different, facing very different challenges. Five out of six campuses in your zone are Title I schools, right?
Yes.
So that's just a unique challenge that you guys are facing to, so it's just not comparable across, you know, zone to zone. And I also, I gotta call out, 8.5 on the workforce satisfaction. That is incredible. I mean, we talk about great places to work and that says you guys are nailing it. So congratulations.
And if you look at the supplemental slides, our elementaries are real high in those. I think every elementary was either 8.7 or 8.9 on those. So yeah, good people working, good people leading and good staff working in all of our buildings.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Deb, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
No, I was just going to congratulate you on the great numbers on Remington and Stetson and Evans as well. Good job.
And I forgot to check in with student board to see if you guys are still, if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, I mean, that buzzer beater right there, he got the field goal. I also like sports. Victory!
If this were NASCAR, so far you have the trophy.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very, oh, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Dr. Gutierrez, the bar has been set.
I was going to lead with, I am not even going to try to do that. Teresa said I had to try to beat him. No, I'm going to stay within my time, but I am going to defer to Dustin and let him have that. So Veronese Gutierrez, I connect Zone Superintendent. And as you all know, I connect is always different. And so as I go through the slides, I'll point out where the differences are. So definitely have more schools than the other zones. And we are in the approaching category for our district performance framework for several reasons. We do have GOAL. And whenever we have the discussions about data, there's always that little asterisk about GOAL and how it impacts our data. GOAL does amazing work and they are serving a need in the community. But there is an impact to the data. And so there is that. Spring Studio, you will notice, only has one bar. And that is because last year they had no rating due to insufficient data. They had 10 5th graders. And so because of that, there was not enough data to give them a rating. And so we changed the grade levels that they serve. Now they only serve 6th through 12th and that gave us enough data. So that's why Spring Studios only has one bar. Most of the schools made great improvement. PTAA was surprised. They had a dip that they were not expecting. And they are working diligently to get that bar back up. We do have two schools that are at distinction and both of our AECs were in performance. So it's okay that it's a two. It's okay that we're approaching because every single one of these schools is doing amazing work. So I will take approaching because I know they're doing great work. On our STAR assessment, these, so the next few slides, these only reflect Patriot, Spring Studio, and PPEC. Because while the charters do use STAR, the majority of them, they don't necessarily share the data with us. They aren't necessarily using the district STAR platform. Some of them have their independent platforms. So we only are showing you Patriot, Spring Studio, and PPEC on here. We're doing really, really great with our math. Our Zone Academic Administrator, Rochelle Colehouse, has done an amazing job of ensuring that as many of our math teachers that can are participating in Math DNA. She is there with them, participating in two different cohorts and making sure that math instruction is really strong. There is a little bit of a dip in the math growth. So I met with the three principals the week. We came back and talked about what's happening, what are we doing? Are we digging into the data? How can we support you? What are we going to do? And I was assured by all three of them that they have all confidence that we will do well on CMAS and PSAT and SAT. Our reading, the reading achievement is on a positive trajectory. That reading growth made me a little nervous, made me a lot nervous. And so we definitely had conversations about what is happening there. Are we over emphasizing math, not focusing enough on reading? And so we are strategizing around what do we need to do in reading instruction, refocusing our PLCs, making sure that Rochelle is working with our principals and our teachers and making sure that we're where we need to be instructionally to make sure that we meet those targets in both achievement and growth. And Mr. Pierceall at PPEC, Superintendent Hiltz gave him a sticky note and he put it on his door. And he said, "I want you to hit 90 on your SPF this year." He still has that sticky note there. He told me I'm going to hit that target. So I said, "Okay, I'm going to hold you to that." And Ms. Patel did not have a sticky note. She said, "Well, Peter didn't give me one." So I gave her one and now she's going to, she says she's going to meet that target. So you've got to give all my principals sticky notes. On this slide, there is no data, but yet there is. So we don't have elementary data because the three schools that I mentioned are all secondary. They don't have elementary. And like I said, the charters have STAR assessment, the ones that are using it. But they don't necessarily share it with us. And so rather than give you half or two-thirds of the charters, we decided if we don't have a full dataset, let's not include it. But know that every single charter is digging into data, whether it's STAR or DIBELS or MAP or whatever it is that they're using. They have amazing data walls, they're doing PLCs, they're coaching, they're working diligently. We just don't have charts to show you. And then this is our Vow. We're at an 8.0, so also on an upward trajectory for the Vow. On this one, so I keep saying we don't have elementary. And we have a bar for the elementary students. I talked to Logan and I said, "How do I have an elementary bar if I don't have elementary students?" And he said somehow some of the elementary students at GPA were able to answer the survey. And so that rating comes from students at Grand Peak Academy. And they're answering about Grand Peak Academy, not necessarily about D49. So we have data for Grand Peak. It wasn't a lot of students that answered about Grand Peak, but that's where that data is coming from. So it was really interesting. But we do have pretty high satisfaction rates from both our parents and our secondary students at our three operated schools. So overall, we have quite a bit of blue and green and some areas that we need to work in. That district performance framework, we have a lot of conversations about. The majority of the zone is charter. And so we can encourage, we can support, we can have conversations. But ultimately, they're independent and so their performance, they're the ones that manage that. And we encourage, we support, we build relationships with them. And every single one of them, when we've had conversations with them and met with them about their SPF's, every single one of them has indicated we very much want to be schools of distinction. Every single one of them. I don't think any one of them said we were not interested in that. So definitely, I connect is, I kept this phrase from Superintendent Hiltz when we had our visit from Rempecks and it's like, "Yeah, we're a constellation of choice." We're also, last night on the news, they announced that D49 is the largest district in the Springs. Well, I connect is contributing quite a bit to that. We are 54.7% of the total district enrollment. So more than half the district is I connect and we are going to continue to grow. We have seven out of 10 of the high schools. Next year, we will be opening up the 11th high school. So Pioneer Technical Arts Academy will be opening up their 9th grade next year. It will be at their current site. Apparently, it's not that easy to build a high school. There's easements and water rights and the county versus the city. Mr. Pendy keeps encountering all kinds of roadblocks. Eventually, there will be a beautiful high school built on the corner of Mark Shuffle and Stetson Hills, eventually. And it's going to be PTAA slash PTEC. But not to be confused with the James Irwin PTEC. It's going to be a early college high school. And they will be offering three associate degrees. We also have nine out of 12 D49 middle schools. And we are going to be opening up the 13th middle school, as you know, with Patriot Middle coming up. Ooh, see, I told you, I wasn't going to beat it. And I will tell you Patriot Middle, I'll talk about it a little bit more when I get to the new CT pathways. Banning Lewis Prep Academy will soon be giving us information. They're adding a fine arts wing. And so they And so they need to inform us of that. And then I need to inform you that they're doing that. So I'm kind of giving you a preview of that. This year, we started the Applied Homeschool Program. There's fifteen students that are participating in it. That brings a little bit of PPR to the district. So we're hoping to grow that program. We have the Big Picture Learning Partnership that is going to continue at Patriot. And they met Paul Austin, our homeschool program manager, and fell in love with him. They said, "If anybody's Big Picture Learning, it's Paul Austin." So now they're wanting a partnership with him. And we have several CTE pathways in development. These will all, I'm sorry, not all. Three of the four are going to be at Patriot. The AI coding, I'm sending Mr. Pierceall, Ms. Patel, and two of the teachers, Mr. Winsom and Ms. Cummings, to a conference in April, the ASU plus GSV, so they can start thinking about what is the AI pathway going to look like at PPEC slash Spring Studio. But the others will be at Patriot. And by the end of next month, Mr. Bailey at Patriot will be a certified CTE director, which means that Patriot can be designated a CTE campus. And seventy percent of students at Patriot will be engaged in a CTE pathway. So we're just continuing to offer choice. And Iconnect am hoping to continue to draw more students, not necessarily from the other zones, but hopefully from outside. And so we can continue to be the biggest district in the Springs. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, not a question. I just wanted to note real quick, district-wide, we are exceeding in overall customer satisfaction, which I think is great, obviously. But even more specifically, we are exceeding district-wide across each of our zones in the voice of the workforce. So I just thought that was something fun to note.
Director Schmidt?
Wow, Pike's Peak, Early College, and Mountain View Academy. Amazing.
Absolutely amazing. They rocked it. I like all the choices. Some of them scare me. AI scares me, I'm sorry. But overall, I like all the choices. So, good job.
Thank you.
Director Heil?
So I had a question as I'm looking at your zone performance. And it's really interesting because the overall score is in approaching. And yet, every single one of our schools in the zone is at performing. So understanding that GOAL is, of course, huge, but it's being measured against the AEC framework, not. So I'm just, I'm just really confused how that doesn't get accounted for in the zone performance framework.
So my initial instinct was to ask Logan to give me two slides, one with GOAL and one without GOAL. And I stopped myself because I thought GOAL is part of the zone. It needs to be on the slide. And we, I didn't want another one that did not include GOAL.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't understand why, if it gets considered separately as an AEC, why does it then not get considered in the zone performance framework as an AEC and then weighted appropriately?
So let me explain.
Yes.
The state offers two levels of performance framework, the district performance framework and the school performance framework. The zone performance framework is something that we developed using the same metrics, but applied to our four zones. And I think you've seen tonight why it's appropriate for us to measure the group of schools that make up a zone. The state offers an alternative education campus AEC adjusted framework. And that's what you see here. You see GOAL's scores here of fifty-eight, sixty-five. Those are on the AE campus framework. But they do not offer an alternative education district framework. So while those scores look good for GOAL in GOAL's columns, they are evaluated on the same standard because we use the district performance framework to model our zone performance framework. Because the district is, frankly, our zones are bigger than many districts. They would be in the top fifty of district sizes, all four of them. So I'll just make this observation. I have great respect that Dr. Gutierrez did not make this observation, so I'll make it on her behalf. The reason District Forty-nine is in performances here is because we did a request to reconsider, and the state calculated our performance band without GOAL scores included, very appropriately. What we know from our calculations, and they confirmed it, is that the impact of GOAL on our district is almost thirteen points. So imagine the impact on our zone, not on our whole district, but just on our zone. If you take that bar at forty-six point one and tap thirteen points on top of that, this zone is approaching sixty points in the, in the unweighted or the unskewed. And yet, GOAL is part of us. How much do I respect not having two slides? I'd rather have this conversation and explain it and reaffirm. Every time we have this conversation, we reaffirm our commitment and our love for GOAL as a school, what they do for Colorado, what they do for the region, and what they do for our district. But this is a great example to show that our choice portfolio is so compelling, it's so attractive. Colorado needs every one of these schools. Colorado really needs GOAL. And so I'm proud that they're a part of this portfolio. I'm proud of the zone performance. And I know that they are, they are absolutely a source of great inspiration for our other zones, but they're also learning from our other zones. So I just, I'm incredibly proud of this presentation tonight. I think these four leaders have shown you why the zone model is the right model.
And so what I'm trying to do essentially is call attention to a little bit of insanity in the way that these things are being treated. Because on one hand, we have an alternative education campus. And so it is being treated differently when we evaluate it on a school level. And so on a school level, for the kind of campus that it is, it is performing well. But then, as soon as we roll it into the district numbers, we no longer treat those students as alternative education campus students. We treat them as every other kind of student. And it's a significant data inconsistency that ought to be resolved.
And if I could, Mr. Heil, it's on this particular slide for this year, it's both GOAL and Patriot. Because Patriot did not remove their designation until July one of twenty twenty-four.
Good point, thank you.
Just as an aside, it would be significantly more than thirteen-point impact on the zone because in the district, GOAL's about, what, twenty percent of our population, right? It's six thousand. In that zone, it's fifty percent of the student population. So fifty percent of this score is GOAL students when you look at it. So it's probably more like, what, almost thirty-point improvement? Right? Because it's going to be more than double the district. So you'd be looking at seventy-six as in a zone of distinction if GOAL's points were taken out of that, probably.
We are going to model that for you at the annual planning summit. So don't steal too much of my thunder. But we, Logan has done a great job for us, and we can show you that calculation. And you're right. With that adjustment, the Iconnect Zone is the zone that is closest to the distinction level.
And I just wanted to point out one other thing, too, is we have, some of our GOAL students are also doing concurrent enrollment.
Yes, they are.
And so you've got to look at the whole picture, not just always think of it as the, as the redheaded stepchild. And so I've, the economic benefit to the state of Colorado because of GOAL Academy, Superintendent Hiltz and I have talked about that. Sometimes you look at statistics and it would be worth digging into further. But it shows the average lifetime earnings of someone who doesn't graduate high school. Then you have a bar of the average student who graduates high school, what they can make. And then it goes on to earning an associate's degree, master's degree, bachelor's degree. And so when you look at those numbers, GOAL is benefiting the entire state of Colorado. So do we have any questions about Iconnect Zone or any other comments? All right, well, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think next up, we have the superintendent evaluation.
Good evening. I will, I'll just reiterate how proud I am of these four leaders. And I kind of made a side comment to Brad as we were sitting there. I think this is the healthiest team and level of collaboration and innovation and leadership that I've seen in thirteen years. I think what we're seeing here is the promise of the zone model being increasingly realized. We're not, every one of them said, "We're not where we want to be." But they also all were able to point out significant growth and improvement that's happening. And so I really appreciate our zone leader team, the collective leadership, the individual leadership. They are really driving excellence in District Forty-nine. So thank you, zone leaders. What a great job, great job you did tonight. So partly because I'm still recovering a bit and my voice is not where it should be, I'm going to move very quickly. And I don't think you'll have a lot of comments because you already had an executive session to chew through this. Your opportunity here is to move forward the evaluation that you provided to me of my performance. It is, it is absolutely legal, honorable, and ethical that we could be having this conversation in executive session. But we collectively believe that the evaluation of the superintendent is the public's business, and you should do the public's business in public. And so we talk about this, we have in my entire tenure in the district. We talk about this evaluation in public. I want to be clear about what I understand from your evaluation. So you evaluate me on seven domains, leadership strategy, service to our customers, knowledge management, workforce operations, and results. And so because I like the numbers better, we'll go backwards. You rated me four out of four on results, which is our, kind of our final outcomes. And Mr. Van Weer and Ms. Devola and I worked really hard on a superintendent metrics document that informed part of your evaluation on this measure. That, that was great. I earned eighty-seven point five percent of the points available on that tool. And so you determined that that exceeded expectations. You rated a four. In the area of operations, which is efficient and effective management, you rated me as meeting expectations. Moving up, you rated me as exceeding expectations in terms of the workforce. I think that's largely justified by our workforce, voice of the workforce results across not only the zones, as you heard tonight, but across other departments as well. I'm kind of a know-it-all, but I don't think that's why I earned a four in domain four. I think it's because we have really good people in our teams that are sharing best practices. That's a priority of mine, that we do the kinds of reports that you saw tonight. I really appreciate the leadership of the zone leaders in bringing that report format to another level. They leveled it up, didn't they, year over year? This was better than last year, and both of them were even way better than the year before. And so that reflects in the rating of four, exceeding expectations there. We work really hard to know our customers, to know what they expect, to serve them well. In your comments, which are in the executive component, you cite things like our weather communication. You cite things like how well we listen in the culture and climate survey and other surveys that we have done. And I think as a team, we receive that rating of four. That certainly, there's no way the superintendent can be sensitive to customers. That requires a whole team of people. And so thank you for giving that whole team that rating. I know I'm a part of that team. I lead that team. But this is a team rating, and we really receive it that way. You rated me as not meeting expectations in strategy. This is the lowest rating, the only one that wasn't meeting or exceeding expectations. And I have this kind of weird analogy because I think if I'm sitting in the audience, I'm saying, "Wait a minute. If you're getting a four in results, how do you get a two in strategy?" It's kind of like if I baked you some cookies and y'all said, "Peter, these are some delicious cookies, but your recipe is lousy." And it might be. Because it might be that I had to bake five batches of cookies to get the ones that you liked. Or it might be that the recipe's only in my head and nobody can reproduce it. Or it might be that the recipe is written in cursive that nobody can read. There's ways that you can get good results even with imperfect strategy. And in your comments about strategy in the rating here, you said that I needed to clearly delegate more, that I needed to clearly integrate workforce segments, and that I needed to clearly define the next steps and follow-through. So I'm getting the impression that our board is looking for more clarity out of my leadership. And I will take that, salute smartly, and improve it. I will clarify my socks off and give you an opportunity to improve this rating into next year. Because I think the results are very strong. Let's make sure that we document and memorialize the processes that led to those results so that we have sustainability well into the future. And then in domain one, leadership, you gave me a three out of four. And what I want to point out is that the board's ratings tracked very closely with the multi-rater ratings that you have. They're the other document that's shared here. I won't put it on screen. But you know what's really interesting? My ratings on the multi-rater matched the thirty-eight people, I think, that rated me, to the one-hundredth point. So I rated myself, overall average, four point oh nine without knowing their ratings. They rated me four point oh nine without knowing my ratings. And in each of those seven items, I was within two-tenths of the multi-rater. What that tells you is I'm tracking really well with the people that I lead. And the people that support all of our departments and lead our departments are very transparent with me. Because I had a good sense of how they rated me, and we matched up really well. And our rating, the rating that I did with the team and they did of me, matched up really well with the board's rating. So I think you have a highly valid, and you have a highly reliable. Those are two statistical measures. This evaluation on screen is both valid and reliable. I would encourage you to move it forward and adopt it. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Director Devola?
I just have a clarification of something that you had said. So the two on here is partially meets expectations. You had said it was, does not meet. Just wanted to clarify that it was partially meets, which is a different thing.
I appreciate that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Also, this instrument is a four-point scale.
That's something else.
And the multi-rater is a five-point scale. I'm going to recommend we align those next year.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so you and I spoke about this, but since we're having the conversation in public, let's go ahead and have it. So when I look, I had exactly the same observation you pointed out, that how do we get to outstanding results with, with a deficiency or however we want to frame that in strategy? And honestly, when I look at our roles, and for oversimplification's sake, distill them down to their fundamental essences. The board role is basically to set expectations and priorities. Then the superintendent comes up with strategies for meeting those. And then the cabinet members then take those and operationalize those. So we have a lot of initiatives going. We are a very big enterprise, and we can handle those. And a lot of those are coming from the superintendent. And we're delivering outstanding results. We just heard about how we're doing as a district from the four zone leaders. And yeah, I don't think we can get there without great strategy.
Director Schmidt?
Yeah, to go on with your recipe, it makes a difference if you use wheat or white flour. It makes a difference if you use oleo or butter. It makes a difference if you use artificial sweetener or sugar. So that's how that can happen.
Nikos?
Yeah, I want to talk about recipes, too. I think through this, we can determine that Superintendent Hiltz is Coca-Cola. Because we like Coca-Cola, but we're not entirely sure what's going on in there. We will drink it anyway.
I'd like to recommend we get back to sports analogies, please.
NASCAR cookies. We are having so much fun. The one thing I want to point out, too, is I want you to look at the overall evaluation because Superintendent Hiltz went from being one of three to one of two to one of one. And so you've really walked us through some really tumultuous times, and I really appreciate that. And so if you could focus, I know it's human nature to look at, "Well, this one is partially meets." But I think you did it right when your presentation tonight, going from the bottom to the top. And you know, the other thing to look at is replication. When they talk about delegation, is to replicate a lot of what you're doing by delegating it to other people. And as we've seen tonight, we have a lot of talent here. we've seen tonight, we have a lot of talent here to, to do that with. So, I don't know if that adds any other clarification. Is there any other comments on the superintendent evaluation? Director Devola?
Just so, uh, people are aware, I know we've talked about this before, but it did take a significant amount of time for us to come through this rating process. Um, and in order for us to come to, um, the numbers that we got, we needed a supermajority. So, four out of the five of us had to agree on the number that is displayed here on the screen. And that took a lot of, um, hashing out and delving in and, um, looking at other resources, um, to, to really do it right.
And I'd also like to thank again Director Devola and Director Rick Van Weeran, uh, for coming up with an evaluation tool that was both subjective and objective. And believe it or not, I've actually had other districts reach out to ask for how we did our evaluation and what we used on it. So, okay, if there are no other comments, do you have anything you want to end up with Superintendent Hiltz?
No, ma'am. Thank you very much. I appreciate the work you put into it. More work than any other board has put into. Because to get to consensus is a lot harder than each individual making their own ratings. So, I think that's also a major level up, uh, in the process. And even tonight, Mr. Anderson and I were texting about getting, getting this process, kind of getting it memorialized on an annual calendar. And so, I think we'll do an even better job with this collectively next year.
And speaking of which, now it's our turn. Uh, Lynette extended the date to get, uh, the Board of Education. It's our turn under the multi-rater surveyor, survey tool. And because we didn't have a lot turned in, including student board members who've sat with us at the dais, and including staff and some people in the community, if you have not completed your Board of Education evaluation, please do so. Lynette, I think we're going through Friday? So, you have until Friday to get your board evaluation done. Yes, tomorrow. Okay, next up, we have the Raptor discussion. That's right. I'm sorry. Lynette, you can go ahead and sit down. We gotta go through policy and procedure. Or do you present on that too? Or are there any? No, I'll let you. Are there any questions or do you want to talk about the changes? Okay, are there any questions on the policy and procedure updates? Okay, now we're done with that. Now you get to stand up again and do Raptor.
Is this a Catholic mass?
Okay, so, we're just talking about, or following up on the public comment sign-ups. Um, we need to come up with a decision on whether or not we want to test the Raptor check-ins. I think I already went through this at the last meeting. This is kind of just updated. Let's see if it'll work for me this time. Yep. So, this is what the form will look like when it goes live. Um, let me see if this works. I'm not gonna sign in, but it's behind there. It's the same form we use on the iPad. It's just available online. Sorry. Um, so, I will offer to assist those who cannot work online. They can come to my office. They can call me. I'm also going to offer some training classes for those who would like to attend to see how to, um, sign up online and then how the process would work with check-in. Um, to be determined on those dates if this goes through. The cost for this would be two ninety-nine a building and since we're only having it in Creekside, I hope, it will only be a one-time charge of two ninety-nine. So, we need to come up, or you guys need to have a consensus to do a test run for a few months before making it official. And then, a consensus on the time to open and close, as well as the date, um, the board would like to have this active.
One thing I'd like to share is, uh, Lynette has taken the time. She has coordinated with quite a few executive assistants who also have online signup, just to compare and contrast how they do their signup procedures. And, um, so, that, I just wanted you guys to be aware, she's talked to neighboring districts and even districts I think that were further away, weren't they?
Yes.
And so, what were, what were some of the averages you were hearing or what did you hear that they liked or disliked about this?
So, most of them will close their, they start off at ten in the morning and they close by noon. So, they only give a couple hours, which, that's not gonna work. We know that. Um, and then, a few of them gave twenty-four hours, um, to keep that form open. Um, and then they, a lot of them didn't require check-in. So, that if, if they called the name, you know, if you were there, you were there. But they weren't going to have you check in at the door. And I don't know if they were smaller districts or not. I just kind of started writing down the responses from my emails. So, didn't really look into their district.
And I think what we had talked about was a twenty-four hour process. And then, they would check in when they arrived. Because some of the problems we've run into, and the reason we were looking into this, is we've had people signing in under alter egos that, that wasn't the person who was speaking. And to make sure that they weren't, just like the schools, that they weren't on a, on any registered sex offender lists. We have students here. And the other thing is, there have been moments where the check-in line, some of the people who have signed up have not been very gracious to the staff. And, uh, there was a lot of staff that wanted to avoid, um, being there to help with this check-in. So, what I need to hear from the board is, is this something you want to test run? Um, what would you like to do to move forward with this? We already have it in some of our schools for people who come into our schools. So, it's not quite as hard to implement. And student board, uh, we actually had student board members try the check-in and get their, their badges. So, it was kind of neat to see that. So, I wanted to hear from the board what she would like to do. Director Schmidt?
Well, my biggest concern is, but I don't know if it has to do with this. It might have to do with BEDH, would be, um, possibly interfering with First Amendment rights or protections. Um, and if the form closes at three, can people sign up afterwards? If they don't want to talk about the agenda, how will they be sorted? I mean, are those questions for now? Or is that questions for BEDH?
If we decide to do a test run, then we will decide if we want to move forward with it. If we move forward with it, then we have to revise BEDH to change the procedure for public comment.
I'm not a fan of biometrics, but I'm open to a trial run.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so, I think that the, the training aspect of it should be pretty simple. And the reason is because we already have this same form, um, on an iPad that, uh, we ask people to, to fill out, um, when they come into the building. So, uh, I, I don't see a problem there. Um, I'm curious about the licensing cost if we could decide to continue with the roadshow. Um, and that, I, I'm, I, if, I think we already have Raptor subscriptions in those buildings that we should be able to leverage for that. So, we shouldn't have to incur any cost. But have we looked at that?
Because, like you said, they, they are in the buildings, but there's something different with the tablet. Um, I'd have to find out if we have to get a tablet for each or if I can just take my tablet and use their Raptor systems within each building.
Okay. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have the answers back, uh, on that before we, we roll out the test run. Um, well, actually, we don't have to, to know that for the test run. It just before we decided to, um,
Yeah, because we could test run to see if we even like it before.
Exactly. We could just test here if, if that's, if, if that's what we want to do.
We could also test run it at Falcon when we do the showcase there.
Nikos?
The only question I had about, was about the timing. Uh, I, I look at three to three. And I understand that we're gonna prioritize some participants, only the first five, um, based on a tighter relationship with the district. But other than that, it's gonna be first come, first served. And so, I just look at three PM as, we got a lot of parents, um, who are working at that time. And so, I would just, I, I'd like to look at how we can adjust that time. Maybe, maybe we open it at six-thirty PM, just try to find a time where people, where the most people are available. Um, and I think that actually dovetails nicely because they would come to speak to us at six-thirty. Um, and then, um, maybe extend it out. I know that we're asking you to go through and, and, and sort those folks, right? So, um, uh, but if we can maybe push that signup time a little bit later, and the only reason I'm saying that is because there might be folks who, during the course of the day, they're like, "Oh, my God, this is, this is happening in our district. I just heard about this. I want to go speak about it." Um, and just give them some sort of, uh, flexibility on that. But, um, definitely consider your schedule, um, before making any adjustments to that.
I can tell you right now, three is cutting it.
Okay, fair enough.
And I think Director Devola had mentioned teachers. And that's why it's a twenty-four hour window. So, they get out of school. They could do it at six-thirty at night. I would think the average ti, sign-in time is, what, a minute and a half?
Yeah.
So,
Right. It's just a question of if we have more than five teachers, um, who wanted to sign up, then the, the sixth slot goes to first come, first served. And we've got a whole bunch of community members. If we've got some sort of hot button topic that, that draws a, a, a high participation rate, um, I, I just want to make it that signup fair for, for people.
Nikos, I know you've had your hand up for quite a while there.
No, it's all right. I, I love having my hand up in the sky. Um, I was actually one of the student representatives that was present at the meeting in which this Raptor technology was introduced to the district. And from what I saw there, it seemed pretty neat. And if I'm understanding correctly, you said that we've already implemented it in at least one building?
Actually, we have the Raptor system in all of our traditional schools, I believe. It, it's slightly different. So, we're just looking at something we're already using at our schools for check-in and implementing it for public comment.
Okay. Well, with, with that implementation, I would assume that we already are, are pretty all, pretty, pretty all right with the way it works. So, I'd imagine that attempting to use that same technology, which we're trusting in our schools, could probably not be bad to at least see how that would work in another setting to improve, uh, Board of Education meeting efficiency.
Director Livia Wright?
I honestly think the twenty-four hour window, regardless of what time you start it. So, if it starts at three and goes to three, online is more fair than the current try and show up and get here first. Um, to people with all kinds of schedules, not just teachers or district employees, but we have plenty of parents who have jobs that can't get here and stand in line at five-thirty to try and get on the signup list, who might not, they might, they, they literally physically can't, or who do shift work and can't, or, you know, um, work in secure environments where they can't do anything online or off until they're out of their building. But having that twenty-four hour window, I mean, if you're really that burning, you're gonna find a way to get on there at three oh-one, right? If, if you're really that, "I have to be in. I've got to make sure. We've got to fill this up." There'll be, that's gonna be the same group of people who showed up and lined up at four because they could and they wanted to make sure their names were on it. That dynamic doesn't change. But it does make it so that people have a chance from whatever their work or their life schedule is to be on that list because they don't have to physically get here until they'd actually have to speak. Um, and having that twenty-four hour window accommodates lots of people's schedules. Um, basically, then no matter when you work, there's a minute somewhere in there. If a minute and a half somewhere in the twenty-four hours that you are not working, that you can go online and sign up. Um, and it, right now, is fairly rare that we have all twenty spots taken, right? Um, so, thirty, right. So, we have thirty spots. That's right now. So, it's fairly rare that we have all thirty of those taken anymore. Hopefully, we're not gonna get to the point that we have forty-five people showing up to sign up for thirty spots again. Um, so, I think that this is worth trying. And I think, personally, I think you try it out first rather than making it official so that you can kind of work out the bugs before you try to shift a policy. Um, so, I like the idea of a test run. I like running it for a couple of months. Um, because that lets Lynette see what other, what other problems there are to solve, um, before we move forward. Um, so, basically, the other thing you needed from us was, when would we want to start this, right?
Yeah.
So, my question is, I know they said we could test it out at the, the showcase next month, but that, the fact that it's not here is already a lot of extra on a whole bunch of you. So, would trying, starting the trial run in, at that meeting be too much, given that you're also in a different location? Or would you rather, so, what, what would be better for you from that perspective?
So, the next two months, we're doing traveling meetings. Um, but Sand Creek is closer, so I would prefer that it be closer. So, if I need anything from over here, I don't have to text anyone, "Hey, bring this to me." Because it, it did happen. I forgot something.
Director Schmidt?
Um, again, I'm, if we're gonna get to sorting, I think the only fair way to do it is randomly.
I think, well, keep in mind the revision, it was up to thirty participants and it's only the first five.
First five are all sorted.
And so, it's only if people spoke at the, if we had full slots and somebody had spoken at the last meeting and all the spots were filled, then they would go into the second one. That was pretty rare, but I know it can be. You know, it's a big blessing because people get to hear the entire meeting, including the reports. Because we have a lot of people who show up, comment and leave. And, uh, sometimes it's good to learn a little bit more about the district. Director Devola, did you have your hand up?
So, I, I have a couple of concerns. Um, and, uh, one of them is, uh, how are we going to communicate with everyone that this is the way to sign up for meetings without them just assuming they can walk into a meeting and sign up? Because that is kind of an assumption. Um, I just attended a school board meeting for my school and assumed that I didn't have to go online in order to sign up.
Um, we have a wonderful communications team where I will just, um, have Joel post it on, because he posts every meeting. You know, the meeting's gonna be here at what time, you know? And so, we can just have him, um, add that little portion with the link.
Director Livia Wright?
Um, I would suggest also putting it in giant bold letters at the top of all of the agendas. Because if people are looking at our agenda to find out what they want to come talk about because they're frustrated or whatever, then they're looking at the agenda in the board doc. And so, you're gonna want it, everywhere it says Board of Education, you want a giant banner that says, "Signups now online." So, you click on the Board of Education page, the first thing they read, "Signups now online to speak at board meeting." They open up board docs. I would put it literally everywhere and make it the very first thing on each page so that anytime they're looking for any information, before they even get to the point that they're looking at the agenda even, they've seen it. And then they're seeing it on the agenda. And you do that for a few months. The people who are following the meetings, um, who are interested in paying attention to what's on the agenda will know. Because if they were coming to speak, and the majority of the people are preparing something based on what they've read, um, it's where they're also reading that information. So, that could help mitigate it. It won't fully fix it. But I think it's all about communication on, in every media you can.
And also, maybe having Lori announce a few meetings, like, just be aware, this is happening, you know, just updates.
Director Devola?
Sorry. Um, so, that's great for people who are aware of board docs, for people who are following the district, um, those types of things. Um, let's just throw out an incident or a case. Um, for example, maybe there is a
For example, maybe there is a charter school parent who doesn't follow District 49, nothing, and they haven't, they're, they find out from their, someone else in the school, oh, District 49 is talking about renewing our contract. Go to the board meeting and speak. And so they show up and they're like, wait, we didn't know anything about this online process. And they end up being very disgruntled, because they're not following District 49, they're not in our District 49 system necessarily. What do we do with the community at large? And that's, that can be not only for that, but it can be just a person who's a taxpayer who hears from somebody else, hey, you should come to this board meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm open to suggestions, you know. I can only go so far with communication on my end. It would just be anybody's suggestion here.
I would suggest a way for us to open it back up, just for the beginning of the meeting, and then close it. So like a 15-minute window at the beginning of the meeting for them to sign up, if they haven't already online.
Do you mean during the test period, or?
Um, yes. Or some, how are we going to roll out the test period, too? Like, we have to think about all these things, because we don't want disgruntled people who are very passionate about coming. And honestly, I'm just thinking about Mountain View Academy, and we could possibly have people show up for that. And so we, I just want, I'm concerned, that's all.
So for those pieces, some of that's proactive communication to those schools and admin. So I guarantee you that people who are coming, for Mountain View Academy are coming, there's outreach in the school, asking people to speak out. So if we communicate to every single one of our charters, hey, in an upcoming meeting, these things are going to be discussed about your charter, please remind your family members and community members that our signups are now online, right? So you proactively communicate it to the people who are communicating to those parents, please show up. They're going to make sure those parents know how to sign up. They'll probably be the most organized group, as long as we're giving them that proactive notification. And, and I think it's the same thing with the community. Ultimately, the people who are least connected learned to come speak at a meeting and what they had to do to sign up from a meeting by talking to the people who were telling them about why they needed to come. And so that process is eventually going to work, too. So if they knew they had to show, the reason they knew to show up at 4:00 was because someone told them, show up at 4:00 and wait for the door to open, so you're first in line. The same process that let them know, this is what you do, and this is how you sign up for that, is going to be the process that continues to expand it out to the people who may be come once every six years. But ultimately, the question is, what is going to make the whole system work better? I think, long-term, this is going to work better. And the first piece is getting, just making sure we get the word out a whole bunch. So if we need to solve that problem first, in terms of making sure we have all those communication pieces, does it make more sense to try and run a trial in April and May? Or, you know, so that you've got a couple of months for them to work on making sure they have a way to communicate, that they've thought through all that communication piece. We could table this for a month and say, come back to us with what your communication plan is. Those are our options. And we're not going to solve all of it right now. But ultimately, we also got to test how it works, so we can get the bugs out, because the, individually, personally, the ideal would be, get it tested before the end of this academic year, so it's the standard for the next academic year, so that when we're starting out the new rollout next year, it's already in place. But you want to have a chance to get those pieces in place and test it out before then. And maybe it's April, May, June that you're testing.
Director Schmidt?
My concern would be my elderly neighbor down the street that isn't aware of it, doesn't have the technology prowess to fill it out online. What do we do with that person?
That's what Lynette has talked about, that she's going to be available during the workday, so it's 3:00 to 5:00, and then it's.
But how do they know?
Well, let me finish, please, that she is available to help them get signed up. So, like I said, we could talk about 100 different variables, but I think if we're going to try before we buy, that we need to run the test run to see how it works out, because, like you mentioned, what about the elderly person who can't sign up? What about the parent who can't get here at 4:00 to sign up for public form? So there's a bunch of different variables all across the board, and I'm in favor of doing a test run, just to see if we like it. So the next question, we'd look at for, you know, we'll need a board consensus on that, and also what timeframe. Director Heil, did you want to say something?
Yeah. So I am less concerned about folks finding out about the online signup than some of my peers, and the reason is, because anybody who wants to come attend one of our meetings is going to have questions about, where are they? What time are they? What are the dates? And when they go searching for that information, we are the authoritative source. So if we do, as Marie suggested, and add the information that we are now doing online signups to that page, then they can find that out and they, and they can sign up. So I feel very comfortable with that. I do like the idea of running a parallel test. In other words, we would provide online signups, but also have the tablet available to us only during the testing phase. And I think what we're going to find is people prefer to do it online. But once, once we, as a board, make a decision that we're going to implement this or not, and let's, so we'll say that we decide we're going to implement it, I wouldn't want to maintain two systems.
Can I, oh, Director D'Vola?
Is there, is there a way for this system to work? Let me, let me think about this. Is there a way for us, my understanding of the Raptor system is it helps us to make sure that we, that our verifiable people with the right name, right, they can scan to make sure there's no restraining orders, that kind of thing? Is there a way for us to do that without the time restraint, the way that we're doing this right now? Where they can just, they can walk in and sign up through the Raptor system before the meeting?
So the Raptor system does not provide a form? That's why we're kind of connecting them. There are programs, which I had discussed at the first presentation, but they're thousands of dollars. So I was looking for the cheaper, more affordable way to do this, kind of combine the, because we have the Raptor system, so we're getting a discount on that tablet, and then combining what we have with our security system just was cost efficient, I guess.
So then can we use the Raptor system with what we currently have?
That's.
Like, they come, they sign up on the tablet, right? But then they can check the ID.
Then we have someone still sitting with the tablet, and then they check in with the ID.
Yeah, I think what she's proposing is what Director Heil said, is during the test phase, that we would have both the online signup and we would have the iPad here, just as we're test-driving the Raptor system. So if they sign in on the iPad, then they could check in with their ID through the Raptor, I think is the question.
Yes.
We can do that, if that's the route you guys want to take.
Point of clarification, are you asking for only the testing period? Not, so, but then if it went full online, you're not asking that to continue? Or are you asking for that instead of having the 24-hour online?
No, I'm saying, for the testing period, we would want to have that in place, and then we can make a decision of whether or not, which direction to go.
I'm just going to point out something. We have a hard enough time getting people to sign in and put their information into there, and then to ask them to put an ID along with that at the same time. It's just going to, I just can see something else occurring where they get upset, because they already get upset with the form we provide.
Right, but for the testing, we would have to have.
No. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, that, that's going to be an issue.
So if what I'm hearing correctly, do we want to do a consensus to try the Raptor system? Do we want a consensus to do during the testing period what we already have, plus the Raptor, realizing there might be a few people who are upset, but if we can hopefully communicate to them that we are test-driving a system, and this won't be the way it'll always be? So do we have a consensus to try it with our current system still in place?
Yeah, I think, I side with that, and I also want to point out that our current average for public comment is 2 to 3. So don't expect to, you know, barring some major event, if, and if there is one, we might decide to reconsider that testing just for that upcoming meeting, but yeah. It should have minimal impact.
So, I don't know if you guys could at least let me know, are we going to test this while keeping our current place, our current sign-in in place? So I see two heads shaking. I don't see anything. Deb? Okay, Director D'Vola?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm in favor of trying it, just to see what it'll be like, and Deb is saying yes. So we have a consensus to try it while keeping our current system in place. And speaking of public comment, we don't have the second public comment, and so we are adjourned at 10:60. Oh, do we have the miscellaneous?
Okay.
I do. And it's just a comment, a suggestion, I don't know. Last year, when we had four-zone presentations, we were all pretty well overloaded, and I was pretty well overloaded again tonight. Is there any way we can maybe switch that to two zones one night, and two zones one night? Or maybe make sure all four of them are on a smaller agenda, so that we're not so overwhelmed and here till 10:30, 10:20?
I think the reason we did it all together is we also do kind of a comparison for the district performance framework.
That makes sense. But I'm wondering maybe if we can have a smaller agenda to look at that stuff? Or since we're not voting on anything, maybe a work session? Just to shorten the meeting somehow.
Work sessions, sometimes work sessions also get.
Yeah, that's true. Anyway, just putting it out there, a little seed in the, in the brain.
All righty. Okay, now we're adjourned at 10:18 PM.
Just got to commend all of you guys that are still here. You stayed here after our superintendents, so you were in it for the long haul with us.